Welcome everyone, today is April 6, 2021. This is a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call a meeting to order?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, two republics which stands one nation, united by individual liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, the first order of business we have on the meeting mail is a letter from Attorney Ralph T. Lewis III representing the gentleman of Menad family over on Golf View Road, I believe it is. Thirty-four Golf View Road. It says to the chairman, what was the chairman of the golf committee, Mr. Gulat, I am writing this letter on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Menad who are gravely concerned for their children and also the other children on the street. They live at thirty-four Golf View Road in Akushna and they are concerned with the golf balls that riddle their property throughout the day. They have hundreds of balls fly onto their property throughout the season which strike their house, their cars and various personal tee in their yard. They are very concerned that their children or anyone outside on their property are next. Obviously, the property abuts the golf course. And he says, "I am writing to inform you that there is something that the course can do and that it is the course's responsibility to abate nuisances that occur on their property." These cases are unduly actionable and have actually met with a lot of success in the courts. And it goes through a few different statements. Miss Heebert, I don't have to read the statements of court cases, right?
Nope.
One of them just says, "If normal persons living in the community would regard the invasion in questioning as definitely offensive, seriously annoying or intolerable, then the invasion suffices. If normal persons in the locality would not be substantially annoyed or disturbed by the situation, then the evasion is not actionable even though the idiosyncrasies of the particular plaintiff may make it undurable to him." It just goes on and gives some different court cases and things of the like. Talking about their children and neighbors playing in the yard and things of the like. First, I've heard of golf ball nuisances from the golf course. I don't think I've ever received a letter from a resident of balls hitting their house. I know it may happen occasionally, but this seems to be more than just occasionally. So it's been forwarded, this letter's been forwarded to our town council. They've had conversations with our golf managers and our superintendent of greens over there. So I guess, gentlemen, I don't know, I'm not a golfer to know where balls are deflecting or how the positioning of the tee is in relationship to the house for these balls to be getting off our golf course and onto private property and hitting this house potentially hurting the kids and the families thereof. So I know Mr. DeRoche has been out there, he's an avid golfer. And he's familiar with it.
Right, so if you gentlemen, I mean my suggestion, and we can talk about it, would be to see if we can get a meeting together, whether it be with council or with the owners themselves and with representative from the Board of Selectmen. And just get an understanding of what the, what these people's final solution, what they're looking at for an answer to the situation that we have at the golf course.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great idea. I know that Mr. Menad, several years back, Mr. Menad, we went over to Pope Park for balls hitting houses, straight balls. And you got some equipment. We did a deal between Wareham, they used some of their equipment and then we put up a big netting thing over there. Obviously, a baseball field, the ball coming in this direction, the fields are mostly facing away from the houses. Golf is a little bit different and a lot more balls are flying. But Mr. Menad did something very nice over at Pope Park to help those residents out. So I'm all, I'm all for deferring this to you, Mr. DeRoche, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. If you'd like to get out there with the golf, members of the golf committee and management and take a look at what's going on and maybe come up with some recommendation.
Well, I do agree that golf committee should be fully involved in all of this too and the golf superintendent and anyone else who has a little piece of the pie in this thing.
Sounds good.
Very good.
Good with you?
Oh yeah, yeah, I'm good.
No sense in all three of us going out there, especially when I don't know anything about the game. So thank you, Mr. DeRoche.
You're welcome.
If we can get on that this week or the next week and try to do something, you know, before the season really gets cranked out up there, that'd be awesome.
Very good. As a matter of fact, Dan, I believe you're gonna be putting down a path right in that area over the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, actually, we're working there today and we'll be here tomorrow, next day, yes, correct.
Okay, are you putting down the asphalt right at this moment or is that...
I'm sorry, well, actually, we dug it all out today and we're putting the process in. So I'm gonna try to maybe do the berm and maybe tomorrow and start asphalt and on Thursday over there on the cop path. We did some work on the other side near the, near the trailer. You know, we did near the gazebo and stuff. We did some new, we did some new cop paths over there for them last week and now we're doing the remainder. It's actually right where the problem is, believe it or not.
Correct.
Where we're working, yes. I think it's hole fifteen, I wanna say?
Yep, fifteenth hole.
Yeah, so we are working right there where the hole is. And I know he's gonna be doing, redoing a fence. But you know, the way to start it most likely is gonna probably be like a netting, another net again, you know, like we did at the park. It's gonna have to be a finer net, obviously, but I think that's...
Well, I'm sure these are all...
I mean, that's, you know, I mean, I don't know the process.
Different things that will be discussed, you know.
Yeah, because it is, the tee is, we're working, because you know, I felt like ducking a few times for golf balls when we were working over there, so...
Yeah, well, it's every, you're on course.
But no, I didn't get hit, so it was a, it was a good day.
See what kind of recommendations we could come up with to hopefully resolve that issue.
Good.
Alright. And the next discussion that we have is budgets, gentlemen. Trying to get through the last of these budgets, we've got a late start to it. Budgets, DBW, water, sewer, I always know an ice and CMAS. And then having pickup schedule, we'll talk about that last. But we have Dan Menad, our DBW director, Kathy Silver, our office manager at DBW Water Sewer. Welcome.
Welcome.
Dan, we'll go, we'll start with DBW.
So the highway, okay.
Highway to Pioneer.
Alright. Now, you guys have the sheets kinda explaining like the increases and stuff like that, right?
We got budget sheets and then you just gave us, if you wanna use this as a talking point. And we have a pie chart that you just gave us, so...
Have we got ready for the budgets and if you wanna go for that?
So the pie chart, I know you were giving a pie chart. You know, it looks like, I believe our pie chart was something like twelve percent.
Yeah, the whole budget, but just...
Looks like you're breaking this out more accurately.
Yeah, the twelve percent of what's actually highway, water, sewer.
The composition of that twelve?
Kathy did that, yeah.
So that's the composition of that twelve percent, right?
Correct. And the other things we gave you there was...
Is this...
The amount of jobs we did through the nine months.
This is still the whole town wide?
Yeah, so what I did is I did the entire town, but then I wanted to break out because they showed the DBW was just one number at twelve percent, which I didn't think that was accurate because part of it included cemetery and street lighting, which Dan is not responsible for.
Yep, I see the twelve point six five percent. So you took out the orange piece of our original pie chart?
Yep.
The twelve point six five and then you've broken it out.
Yes, I wanted to show...
That's because these are the categories that are like the DOR that they look at, so... I think that's fine, yeah.
No, I just wanted to break it up, especially because water's six percent of it, but that water is itself funding. So it's not gonna just be taken out of the general fund.
Yep.
And then CMAS was four percent and then highway was only three percent of it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have another question. Because I opened up this and I see street lighting and it says right on, not under the DBW.
Correct, yeah, we don't have, yeah.
We got responsible for street lighting, that's under the selectment.
Yeah, I think Jim actually takes care of street lighting.
Right, and I didn't understand what the process is because I've filed a couple of times now for streetlights in my neighborhood. And I'm not getting any results. So I don't know what the situation is as far as do we sub it out to somebody? I was told that, well, we gotta wait till there's a lot of streetlights before the company will come over and replace them.
Oh, it's a light out? It's a light out?
Yeah, one of them is at the corner of Quaker Lane and Main Street, which is an intersection out, you know, my neck of town and Dave yourself. And I know people who walk on the street at five in the morning and...
Yeah, no, I wasn't aware of that. Again, we don't usually deal with it, usually Jim does, but...
Okay.
Hold on, hold on, do that. Time out.
So let me just ask a question. So deep, it was a streetlight that got hit by a car accident?
No, it's a burnt out, it's a burnt out streetlight at the corner of Quaker Lane and Main Street.
Okay.
And there's a burnt out streetlight in front of Katuit Solar Farm. And those are the two that I, you know, put forward to be addressed and, you know, geez.
Not true. I don't know, I don't know who told you, I don't know who told you we have to wait until we get so many of them. As the, as the streetlights go out, we fix streetlights as they go out, just like that. So if you're looking for, if you're looking for a new streetlight where it's never been before, we usually run it through a safety committee and things of the like. But if they're already established streetlights, there should be no excuse why we can't get a contractor out there to change the light fixture. In fact, I think there was something in the agreement when we did it that that would, we would have somebody do it.
Police had something to say on that one.
I understand that, but we, the company that, we went out for an hour P and the company that we hired, because they were the cheapest one, is far away. Like they're like in Boston. So we tried to save up so they don't come in here from, from Boston because then they're gonna charge us more money. So we tried to save a couple of lights at one time and have them come into them all at one time.
Well, that was a bad agreement, I don't know what that's all about. So that shouldn't be occurring, that we went with somebody from, what we did do on the street lighting, it was, we reduced that amount because we changed them all over to the LED lighting and we used to budget sixty thousand dollars and now we budget twenty thousand dollars for street lighting. So we saved taxpayers an exorbitant amount of money by making that change over, by being a green energy community. However, there should be zero tolerance for somebody's streetlight being out for a long period of time. That's not acceptable, I don't see that as acceptable. I know that if people have streetlights, they used to have streetlights, the streetlights should be, yeah, so...
Right, and I also spoke with a gentleman and mentioned that streetlights have been hit and knocked down and they don't get put back up again. And they mentioned one specifically in the Nineth Lane area that's been down for a period of time, so...
Usually, if it's an insurance case or something, a lot of times I'll deal with insurance. And I'm usually, the guy's usually pretty good with me. The only one I had since I've been here actually was one light and it was on the corner of Keane and Peckham. And, you know, it was Bockley, was the insurance company that took care of it and he put the new light up and I never had any issues with him. So, but that's the only one that I was aware of that, since I've been here anyways.
Selectmen wanna?
So Chairman, I would just suggest maybe we could speak to Chief Richmond that if our offices are out at night, just have, as their driving neighborhoods have a notepad or something that they might be able, if they see lights that are out while they're out patrolling, take a note, you know, take a note, submit them into the selectmen's office or, you know, whatever. This way we'll get a running tally, unless you're actually looking for it, you know?
Right, that's definitely, you're looking for a streetlight, but if you have an existing streetlight, we should not be waiting. Months for somebody to have a streetlight replaced that's been there, you know, their entire life or whatever it may be. Once it's established, it's established, it's under the purview of this. And if somebody from Boston can't make it down because they don't wanna come down and change two light fixtures because of the cost, we have plenty of electrical companies here that can go up there and change a fixture just like that. If that's what it takes, I believe it was something in discussion back in the day when we changed over to these LEDs, that would be, the fixture would just get swapped out or whatever it may be, it's not a bulb anymore, it's a fixture, so...
And that's the case in front of the Solar Farm on Main Street. It's still a sodium vapor light, is that correct, what they used to be? It's the orangey light, so it was never changed from an LED light, so...
That could be, we do have circumstances in the town that there are some poles that, in lights that are put up and we have agreements. We have one that's off Fairway Drive, might be Reservation Road off Fairway Drive, Dan? Those are privately owned, they get billed by EverSource and they pay the bill for the streetlights. Because back in the day, there was some kind of agreement made saying, okay, fine, we, they came together a little collaborative, like almost like an HOA fee and it might be a hundred dollars a year and there's ten residents, you each pay ten bucks and you get streetlights. So there are those circumstances. If you're talking right in front of Katuit Solar, that could be a privately owned pole. So that's not part of the town. So I think, Dan, somebody's got a list of all these poles.
Yeah, I think Jim, like I said, Jim was...
Somebody's got a list of the poles and that'll be able to tell us whether it's part of the towns or privately owned poles for that purpose. But there should be no excuse why that one out there can't be swapped out, Mr. DeRoche, so...
Very good.
We can get somebody else to do it. And I don't, I don't know about that agreement with a Boston firm, so... That's that.
Okay, no, no, that is it.
Sorry, Mr. Menad, we got off track and we just went to the street lighting thing, so... That's just the breakdown, letting us know what the pie chart says, right? CMAS is trash, CMAS contracts and things of the like. That's really, we put, we put CMAS in trash under the DBW umbrella, but it's really separate on its own, right?
It's its own budget and, I mean, most of the budget, ninety percent of it, is two contracts. So, you know, it's not a lot of control that Mr. Menad has over those numbers.
That is correct. So that's fine. So Dan, going through your budget, Department of Public Works, Highway?
Yep. You guys wanna start with like the salary ones, which is...
No, we just, I mean, we can just go right down the list. I'm assuming if you wanna talk about that real quick, clerical's gotta be a step right in the contract, the union contract, that's why that bump is there. We haven't determined anything or contract negotiated with anybody as of yet. Salaries, overtime is a...
That one, that was, it's really put back to where it was. Like last year was a, you know, we had an eighty-seven thousand dollar decrease in my budget last year, so that's just putting it back to where we were two years ago. So again, I don't know what the COVID, you know, funded this shit or whatever.
Yeah, that was one of the line items, you're right. Last year, you were one of the very few departments that were able to cut any real amount.
So again, I put it back to where we had it and that's, you know, where it was back two years ago, so...
Yeah, and that was boosted over the years due to the bigger workload, obviously. And then you have contract negotiations that would eat up into the current amount, so...
Yeah, and the other one was longevity, which is, that one's actually me. I got my ten years, so going from...
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, I was gonna ask you about the longevity. It seems kinda low, your environment.
That's what it is, that's only me, right? Because the other ones going into the salary, the longevity goes into the salary, it's right directly into the salary.
Okay, so it's...
So it's a step, it's like a step in their salary, so it kinda goes with their salary. I'm the only one that gets it separate.
Okay, and then you have energy jumped, twenty-seven percent.
Well, we're just going off of last year, we were at thirteen thousand three hundred. So that's, it was just adjusted to, again...
What do we spend year to date this year, Dan? When you change it to eleven thousand, do we have a shortfall?
Again, I don't know what...
You will have a shortfall, as of today, you've spent ten thousand four hundred of those.
So you're gonna have a shortfall?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so we're just going back to where we were and that?
Yes.
Pretty, pretty good?
I wanna be more...
Based on your actuals in previous years, you're pretty much right there and in line? Yeah. Because it's repairs and maintenance of equipment?
Yeah, that one went up again and like I said, I'm just going off, we spent thirty-two five last year, so...
How are we year to date with that line item, pretty good?
Twenty-six two, so we might go over that one as well. We only have thirty-seven hundred left in repairs, make, I don't know, quick.
You keep a, you keep a list of everything that's being repaired, so like we can, if you want to look at where repairs and maintenance were going. We can see that it's mostly towards some of our older equipment.
Exactly.
We sweep up, you know what I mean? So we know where the problem childhoods are. I know we got a lot of new equipment over the years for DBW and we thank the taxpayers for that. But, you know, also understanding that some of this heavy equipment that the town owns, it's not like your motor vehicle, where you're going for a break job and it's two, three hundred bucks.
I think, was it just you, the one with the tackle, the train? Was that the sheet?
I think that was the sheet, yeah.
I mean, it was, that was, we had to send out to do the training. I think that was like ten thousand dollars just for the training to get fixed. Like I said, we do all our maintenance as far as servicing, oil changes and, but something like a job like that was like too big for us to take on, you know?
Of course. We don't have to be empowered to have somebody sit in the garage for a month or something like that, plus be out on the streets doing what they need to do. And then your ten thousand bucks, because we chopped it, but then we knew we couldn't do it, but you did it and we swallowed that pill last year, ten thousand bucks. So that's, that's kinda under what we've funded in the previous years for engineering fees.
Basically, state level funding to get down to gasoline.
Police details, the same thing, you totally wiped it out last year. So engineering fees, obviously, if you're gonna do more engineering, that means you're gonna be doing more projects on the road, off the side of the road, whatever it may be, so you need police details. And that was all totally wiped out last year, so I get that. You went gasoline?
Gasoline, I went up. Again, we're just, we're just pushing it, we should make it this year. But I get, you guys all know, the fuel's been rising like fast, so... Hopefully, we can make it through this year as it stays kinda level funded, it would be kinda good, but... So that was just the...
So I did a...
Thing, because we see the fuel, you know, going up high, so that we added another twenty grand.
I did a quick calculation based on, you know, what the average price was last year, two twenty-five a gallon. And then I did one at two seventy-five a gallon with a new number. So at two twenty-five a gallon, which is eighty thousand dollars, you basically get thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-five gallons of gas. And at the new increase at a hundred, at two seventy-five, you're getting thirty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-five gallons. So it's only like eight hundred gallon difference with that price difference. But you're saying that you're always cutting it close? And the reality of it is, is you carry gasoline in the DBW's budget. But for everybody to understand, that's the whole town.
Correct.
So, you know, given...
Fire, police, EMS, everybody, yeah.
Everybody, so I think that's...
And again, we don't use it, it always goes back, I'm just trying to, you know, be safe there. I mean, again, if that passes the idiots, if you guys wanna keep that data, to keep the budget a little better, we can always keep it that and then can you do a reserve fund transfer at the end of the year or something like that goes over?
You could, but right now, it is what it is. I think everybody understands the price of fuel has gone up. That's why I did that, a little math on it, so everybody at home and everybody else that's gonna watch this can understand that it's not much more as far as eight hundred gallons extra fuel, but eight hundred gallons is some of these vehicles that we use, the fire engines and the light, things of that nature. They're not fuel friendly, so it is what it is. If that's somewhere that FinCon decides that, you know, at the end, Dan, I guess if they need, you know, five grand or ten grand, I guess that might be somewhere the Board of Selectmen say, take it from there. But other than that, I think it's, I think it's necessary. And that's pretty much...
Now, my big one is the road materials. And that's, that's the reason why I gave you guys that list of, that's what we've done in nine months. So kinda wanna give you a little, that's the jobs we did and the funding and...
Which one's, which one, which sheet are we looking at, Dan?
If you look at this one, yeah, the, we were highlighted the yellow. Now, all that money wasn't funded from the DPW budget necessarily, but that's all the work that was completed by the DPW. So I tried to break it out of where we charged and what it came, what line item it came from.
So even now, that's why I'm working at the golf course and stuff? Because my check, I mean, my road material line item, what do you have?
You have two thousand dollars.
Two thousand dollars left. So I'm kinda, you know, working on other people's budgets now, so... And they're getting their jobs done too.
There's two hundred and thirty thousand you have highlighted in the yellow box, but that's not, that's not what came out of your road materials.
No, 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 but no, this is, that's, you got that also...
So it's all broken up?
It's all broken down, what came out of road materials, what came out of the article. That was, when it come out of that grant, that was for River Park. So it's all broken up, that...
Each line item that's highlighted is taken from a different place. So like highway budget is the first one, road materials. Then we had the article that was left over, we had seventy-six, eight, sixty.
So that was the zones, we did the streets.
Then we did the Riverview Park, which is a grant that we received. And then Presidential, they helped out over there, but that was all paid by Presidential. Chapter ninety came out of the chapter ninety funding and then Pope Park paid for their own, which we're still getting invoices from. And the golf course, which he's still at now, is at sixty-three hundred. So those, the only line item that's under the DPW budget itself is the first one, which is...
So that's what I'm trying to kinda justify, like what we're capable of, you know what I mean? If you're working every day, it's kinda needs that type of funding to do it. You know, the ninety thousand, I know we had to cut it. And I mean, again, it is what it is, if we have to, we've got no choice. But I'll just give you a reality of...
Yeah, on road, on road materials, we put road materials as a line item. We use that, the highway department, we've done a lot of drainage work that comes out of road materials.
And I got, I also got two projects that we never, we've done, so...
I know, that's, we talked about it in the past, where you've done some drainage. We completed a pretty good portion off of Mendel Road due to what I consider a lack of planning board review when it came to that stormwater drain, right? Because you actually went in there, did that whole stormwater basin all over again and then you connected off that basin and you ran drain pipe down Mendel Road to the high tension lines, right? We talked about hopefully planning board doing a better job when it comes to reviewing plans for stormwater. We actually have a stormwater bylaw. It's a shame that taxpayers are funding stormwater drains on behalf of developers.
I don't know how old Mendel Road is.
Well, it's not that, it was, I think it was Garrison Lane that was put in by a developer that created that detention point that you worked on, which created that problem worse down at the end of the road, right? So, and we had, you got Hamlin Street on as a drainage project, right? And that's like sixty-five thousand bucks. And that's been country drainage for whatever, the existence of the town. And we're just trying to do things of the like. So I think it's, it's important for everybody to understand that road materials, you would think road materials are for roads by definition of the line item, but it's clearly not. It's drainage and things of the like that complement sometimes a road, right?
Correct.
So I think that's the important, the factor for everybody to realize. When you say road materials, it's like, oh great, we're gonna pave more roads, but we're not. It's clearly not what it's used for.
It's used for, used for, we're really using our chapter ninety funding for...
And only that for paving, really.
Correct, and that's what it's been in. We've been using this for, like I said, drainage and them sorts to repair the streets, so... I mean, some of it's paving, some of it's patching, but it's not, it's not all drainage, but...
Gentlemen, as far as GPW goes, this is something that we did a couple of years ago. I spoke on it a few years back. Mr. Noble, unfortunately, didn't do what the board had recommended and kinda voted on was to use additional monies from our excise tax to do more paving, complement what we get from chapter ninety, which is only three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year, which doesn't get us very far, right? We did Hathaway Road out there, just over a mile and the cost is like four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, correct?
Correct, yep.
So clearly, we can't get very far with chapter ninety funds. I, we, Dan's got a list, I have it in my book here to talk a little bit about water later, where we get to the water budget. But clearly, we collect one point five, one point six in excise, Miss Heebert. And we're budgeting one point one, one point two. And when we had the discussion, when I brought this up, because our roads are falling apart, a lot of our roads are falling apart, especially inside neighborhoods and things of the like. And even a lot of Main Street over down here, which we do own, this one we do not own. We talked about, and we got an article, I think it was either two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand foot road paving. And instead of taking that and using that money, what we talked about was taking that and capturing a portion of our excise tax, which its original intent of excise tax back in the day was for road and bridge repair. We all remember that, I think, right? That was, excise taxes for.
That's what the theory is.
That's what the theory is, the motor vehicle excise tax, right? Everybody pays it. And we are now, in most municipalities, are now using excise tax collections to balance budgets, right? Because the law was changed at some point over the time, and I forget the exact year that they changed the law, and now it says, "for any lawful purpose." So we're using one point one, one point two million dollars to balance budgets, the things of the like, you know, whatever it is, pay increases and everything else. But we've, we don't ever capture any amount of that excise to reinvest in the community like we should have been doing. And when we, when we discussed that with the former town administrator, Brian Noble, he said, oh, yeah, 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 it's a good idea, the board all agreed that we would take some money, whether it was a hundred, two hundred thousand from excise, and stick it in the budget, and we make it for road paving in the DPW budget. He didn't do that, he made an article, and he only funded it one time out of overlay surplus, basically disregarding the board's wishes and the residents and taxpayers of the town of Acushna, um, because he thought funding other things were more appropriate with excise tax. And he, he actually made a comment, and I remember that comment, cause I said, show me the letter from D O R that they said, you need to get closer to your collections on excise tax. Oh, okay, well, for, with four hundred thousand dollars away from that collection, so, um, I guess what I'm saying to you gentlemen is, is there any appetite? As you know, in the, in the recap sheet that Ms. Hebert gave us, we, we do, um, use one point one, one point two this year, I think it is, one point one was last year. If there's any appetite to take some portion of our excise tax and actually allocate it to the DPW's budget for that means.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, for me, I mean, I love, I love brick and mortar projects, I like tangible projects, I like things that you can see, uh, you know, the, the completion of, so that's what it takes to get there, absolutely.
I mean, I, I, I say it only because I drive around this town a lot, and I'm sure Selectman Wona, Mr. Doros does too, and it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that our roads are falling apart. Um, and I think that if we're gonna pay taxes in the community, um, for people like me that don't have children in the school and things of that nature, I don't use building department, I use board health and things of the like, I'd like to see some of my tax dollars at least go to roads and repaving, cause I know that when we went over to Marion, the other one, that's one of them, they joined, Marion and Mason?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
Oh, on Bird Street, off Bird Street. Um, I went over and seen the guys while they were out there doing that project, and, and I talked to a few of the neighbors and they were ecstatic. Um, so it, it, it shows the community that we are reinvesting, we hear all the time about infrastructure, 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 but you know, nobody takes action to do anything about it and stop investing in our infrastructure, and I think that's, quite honestly, it's something that we, we need to take action on.
So we, we purchased, Mr. Chair, we purchased a paver last year, correct?
Correct, correct, yep.
For, to help alleviate the cost, maybe get more miles to our dollar, if you wanna call it that.
That was the plan, that was the plan. Um, we, again, we only get three hundred and ten, three hundred and sixteen, I think, this year from chapter ninety funds, I'm pretty close.
Three sixteen, yeah, I think that's what it is.
Right in that range, um, and, and we don't really get a lot, I mean, Dan, when Dan gets out there and does it, we, we pulled, matter of fact, we pulled from, um, PJ Keating contracts, so what if, well, Myrtle, Wilbur, Conduit, and there's one at Homestead.
Yep.
Um, we pulled those, and we came out, we're doing, for like a third of the cost of that contract.
Yeah, I don't get the numbers.
Yeah.
It was somewhere around there, so the paving, when, when, when we bought the paving machine, and this board supported you and, 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 and the board, um, to move forward and purchase that, um, new paving machine because we get so much out of it, um, the old decrepit one that we had, and we bought a new one, it's paid for by chapter ninety funds, not taxation, so I, I think that, you know, allocating whether it be an extra hundred thousand dollars, if we start there and, and put it in the DPW's budget, under strictly road paving. So, road paving, that would mean that hundred thousand dollars, just like chapter ninety money, just goes to road paving. Um, not for complimenting drainage and things of the like, that, that would be like four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars every year, we could actually do road paving. And granted, we're not capable of doing the major arteries in town, I would never subject, uh, DPW and yourself to do, trying to accomplish that, meaning, you know, like the Nice Lane, a big stretch of road like that, that has to be done outsourced, that's what we'll do, is we'll outsource that kinda work, so it's done, and, and you know, those are roads that heavily travel all the time, it's not like a side street, we have, you know, X amount of numbers per year traveling over versus the middle road, Main Street, Nice Lane, Leonard Street, Hathaway Road like we did, that's a lot of traffic and trucks running over it, so, um, but he's done some great work already with a new paving machine, and I, I look forward to seeing more of that work done.
This money would be transferred through an article or through a?
In the budget, it should be, it should be funded, I mean, I'm only, I mean, it depends on what the board wants to do, the board wanna do a hundred grand, the board wanna do two hundred grand, the more the merrier. I, I'm in the mindset of, your budget, the town's budget is thirty-two, thirty-three million dollars, and what do we give back to the community? Um, that's the problem, and, and I think that this is the way we show that we're, we're doing our job, right, we're, we're the town's leadership, and that's what we should be doing, is is giving back and reinvesting in the infrastructure, I mean, you see, listen, we're gonna be talking about it later on, right? Um, everybody always talks about infrastructure bills and everything else, and it's, it's all talk, no action, and, and we're stuck here dealing with decrepit roads and the things of the like, and if we have the staff and the crew that can get out there and do it, let's do it, and let's show the community that we're reinvesting in, in ourselves.
Very good.
What's the pleasure?
Okay, then we'll come to a determination on the exact amount in the future?
Right now, you know, budget's gotta be in, finance committee, town meeting's coming up, let's.
So to clarify, you're gonna add an extra hundred on top of what's already here as a new line item, is that right? And then add another hundred thousand or whatever amount in the, um, motor vehicle.
Look, you could say it's gonna add a hundred thousand dollars to the town's deficit, false. In theory, it's gonna say, it's, it's gonna look like it's another hundred thousand dollars to the town's deficit, but you've been underfunding what you actually collected excise tax. So, all things being equal, that hundred grand's just gonna be equalized, because you're gonna put a one point three million in the excise tax line item, and it's a wash.
Do you want me to actually make a separate line on the revenue of motor vehicle for road repairs? I mean, it's all, it's ultimately gonna be all in the same grouping.
I wouldn't, I would, I would add a separate line item for Mr. Manata to work out of and call it road paving.
Right.
So that is specific, so that, that hundred grand won't be used for grass seed, picks and shovels and things of the like, he's got other money in his budget to do that, this is strictly road paving.
Right, I'm saying on the revenue side, you're gonna add another hundred, but I'm saying you wanna, you wanna have a dedicated to offset that line item, I can make a separate line saying one is motor vehicle for the one point two or whatever, and then another line below will be motor vehicle for road paving.
That's fine, now, they're talking about the recap sheet, Julie.
Yeah.
However you're gonna put it on the recap sheet and capture it is, is your prerogative.
Okay.
Um, you know, it's, it's there, it's there, we.
Well, at least that way everyone in the future will see that that's specifically.
We use one point, you have one point two are reallocated, you don't have the real collection there.
Right.
Right, from the revenue side, you show an expense side, an expense side only, you don't show the revenue side. So that's where the, the skew's gonna come into place, but I think if you explain it properly to finance committee.
Yep.
Um, I'm sure town meeting's never gonna have a problem with saying, hey, great, you're gonna pave more streets, let's do it, right?
Hmm.
Um, so, you know, I think that's, that's important.
So we're gonna leave my regular one alone there, my road materials, cause again, we got line painting that we didn't do last year too, that needed to be done.
Dan, if, if the FinCon, if the FinCon in the last meeting says we need to make some cuts.
Okay.
I can assure you, it should not come from road paving, the hundred thousand dollars that were taken from excise tax, if we need to come up with X amount of dollars, we'll, we'll make small cuts to whatever we can, and we understand that you do need more money in road materials.
Yep.
I've seen it, I know what you guys have been out there doing, I've seen the cost breakdown to all these projects, the drain projects, um, if that's what it's gonna be, if we need cuts, then we'll have to make cuts, but I, I, I would not be cutting road paving.
Okay.
Um, whether we use that road paving, hundred thousand dollars, and outsource road paving, that's a horse of a different color, it doesn't matter, as long as we get more road paving done and we reinvest in our community, and that's the way I see it. I hope that's the way the board sees it.
Yeah.
So is there a motion to add a hundred thousand dollar line item to DPW's budget for road paving? And take it from excise tax, so we'll just have to make that balance through excise tax revenues, Julie.
Yeah, I'll show it to you afterwards, you can see it, but I know.
That's fine.
Okay, so moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Dan, snow and ice, we move, are we good?
Yep, it's the same, I think, I don't know, we're close this year, yeah, so, I think we went over a little bit, but.
It's hard to believe that we, we spent a hundred and ten, I know that we spent a lot on salt, but it's hard to believe with a little bit of snow that we went up that high.
I'll tell you what, it's, it's, the standards go a lot more than you think.
I know they do.
Uh, uh.
I know, I know, what did, what did you tell us, you said it was like sixty-five grand to fill the salt with one shot, right?
Yeah, it's full now, so that's, and again, I wanna do it, cause it was actually cheaper this year for the salt, this is the cheapest it's been, since I've been here, believe it or not.
That's cause we haven't had a winter in a few years, right, the last doozy we had was what, fifteen, sixteen?
Yeah, yeah.
Back to back storms.
They probably sat on that salt from last year, and that's why they kinda wanna get rid of it.
This is the one, this is the one budget that we can actually deficit spend.
Yes.
So, we actually upped this, this used to be something ridiculous, I think it was sixty, something like that.
Oh, no, it was like twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five grand?
Yeah, we never made that.
There you go.
And Mr. Chair?
Mr. Doros.
Uh, I just, I think we need to make a motion to approve the DPW, uh.
Highway?
Right, DPW Public Works highway budget as presented.
Um, with the change.
With the hundred thousand.
With a hundred thousand dollar change.
Mm-hmm, and Julie, when you speak to finance committee, can you please make them aware of that offset, that it's not.
Absolutely.
Increase in deficit, because we're gonna allocate more out of the excise tax, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I'll second that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion to approve the snow and ice budget as presented?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on to the water?
Um, where's Seemaz, man?
Um, before we move on, I just, it's not budget related, but it is like a time, you know, a project management issue.
Yep.
Um, I figure, why are we having you here? There's two projects, um, that already have funding, it has nothing to do with the budget, one is Lake Street.
Yep.
And just wanna get a sense of what would be best for you, once we get things, you know?
I'd rather do it this budget season, just because I'm.
Right, well, yeah, yeah, so we've got, that was a separate article, right, from town meeting.
I do, and I, I didn't get to talk to Mr. Wona, but I did have, I remember like we talked the last time, I do have, what, twenty-seven, five, I believe? In, uh, for guardrails.
For guardrails, okay.
So, um, so we do have some funding that was already allocated.
Yeah, okay, so.
Um, I was gonna meet the guy, he was supposed to be here this morning, he didn't show up, so I'm gonna meet him tomorrow morning, actually, and we're gonna go over the rest, so I'll have a different number.
Okay.
As far as the guardrails going and stuff like that.
We did have an appropriation from town meeting through CPC, I just wanted to get a sense from you, from a work standpoint, would it be, you know, when do you think you could fit that in?
I'm thinking sooner than later, yeah, maybe May, right, next month, though.
All right, so you, you, you wanna.
Just because I don't have the funding anyway, so we have funds, yeah.
Because we don't have a lot of funds from the previous year due to the COVID cuts, I think he's trying to say that, let's get out there and get it done now, because he wants to be able to utilize whatever cash.
Yep.
That he can get from other means, that's why he's over at golf, he did a little bit of work for presidential terms.
Tell them if you've got some time to do the work, we'd like to work with you on that, and then, um, there will be a request for phase two for the soccer fields.
Yep.
CPC.
Okay.
And then, you know, we're talking.
Again, yeah, if they, I don't know, does he have funding as well?
There's gonna be an article to go, if that funding comes forward, they'd like to see that, hopefully get that done.
I'll do it all before July first, that'll all be done.
Okay.
How's that sound?
That'd be great.
Sounds good to me, I think that's on the articles, I, I seen some CPC articles for the Octomoment, um, like Mr. Wona, I seen something about soccer fields, so whatever we could do there as well.
I just wanted to help you with your planning, I didn't want to, you know.
Yep, no, 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 it's just, again, we're kinda short funding, um, I do get them chapter ninety road, we're gonna do, so.
You got them, you got them really till June thirtieth.
Give me, give me.
He ain't got no money until the new year's, so, take them. All right. Hey, Julie, when, yeah, when, um, Selectman Wona is bringing up a point, um, as far as an article goes, if we go in May tenth, should be town meeting, right?
Yeah.
I think, May tenth, Monday night?
Yep.
And if we get an appropriation for an article, is that spendable ASAP?
Um, technically, if it's an article from the annual town meeting, it's supposed to be for July first onward.
Oh, got it, okay, all right, well, I tried. But Selectman Wona said, he's got money from CPC for Lake Street, for the Lake Street stuff, so, and you're doing something with guardrails, furthering the guardrails on Lake Street?
Once that's already allocated for, so.
Yeah, okay, good, excellent, sounds good.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Wona, it, that was under DPW Department of Public Works, way down in the end, spring, summer project timeline, so are you all set? No, are you all set?
Yeah, yeah, I'm done.
All right, cool, so we'll take that right off, we're done with that. Um, Dan?
Yeah.
You got snow and ice, highway, we did, water. Water's way out there.
Again, the only salaries, everything's level funded except for these step raises that's in there.
Yeah, that's the same thing, clerical, cause it's portions of, of the clerical salary, just like all your salaries have to be a portion to the percentages. Um, Dan, before we get started, we got a letter last, um, we never discussed it with you or Kathy, and in a meeting, to, to let, uh, residents in our water since sewer users know that, uh, effective July first, two thousand twenty-one, the, the water and wastewater rate of the town of Acushna will increase per CBI by six cents per hundred cubic feet of water and eight cents per hundred cubic feet for wastewater.
That's correct, we knew that, and when we did the budgets, I estimated it would be one and a half to two percent, that's why you see the increase.
Okay.
Okay.
I, kinda, we always formally, kinda, in a meeting and discuss it.
Well, we'll have another meeting that I'd like to discuss, you know, the rates for the residents, um, once we have more information.
Okay, but, um, that, if, if so, we can talk about that, but if there's a change in rates, we really should be doing that at town meeting.
Okay.
For both, for budget, so if we appropriate a budget at town meeting, that carries us for the year, the change in rates, I think, would have to be set. That's why we usually, we, back in the old days, the Board of Public Works made this, um, with this agreement with the city of New Beffet, that their rates come in by like March, so that we could set the rate for a town meeting, just so you know, so if you're proposing a rate change.
I don't know, I haven't had time to analyze all that, usually I, I.
Well, we're finalizing budgets now, so we must be okay, no?
I mean, for this year, we're fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, for, next year, I'm saying as of July first.
Mm-hmm.
And you want that before, usually I've been doing that in July or August, just once we get a whole year, I'm gonna analyze it.
Been doing it because we haven't changed the rate much, we did it once.
No, we didn't, right, we didn't change, we didn't change it at all.
Yeah, we did a small change.
Yeah, a little one, the first tier was only forty cents, we went from five, sixty to six bucks, and we haven't changed it since this board.
We didn't change it last year.
Town meeting dissolved the Board of Public Works and made the board Selectmen responsible in two thousand fourteen or fifteen.
Right, and then we switched over to the tier rate at that point, but didn't, didn't ever increase the bottom one.
Okay.
Until.
So we can have that discussion. So water, Dan?
Okay, so again, as you said, the salaries and all that stuff is just, um, one of them is the permanent labor, which is Ryan McCaughy, he's got the step raise, and then the other one is, uh, Ian.
What's the deal with French benefits, health vacation?
Okay, that's with, uh, you guys, so.
I actually, I increased that, just based on, and I don't, it is Julie and Melissa who does that, but based on FY twenty, actual, it was twenty-seven thousand, three fourteen. So I'm thinking of FY twenty was that much, can't be, we're gonna go over it again this year, so I just tried to be realistic and say, okay, maybe thirty thousand? Um, Julie, do you have any? And those of the, um, their portion of the health and dental, uh, or sorry, just health and, um, life insurance.
Okay.
Costs for their employees to take it.
Out of the water and sewer guys.
Uh, yeah, the people who are portioned water and sewer, that's the premium for people who take care of their hands.
We do that with golf as well, right?
Yep.
All on enterprise funds, all right, and, uh, Dan, Julie, the maintenance of system, I see a pretty big jump, but I shouldn't say that, because you're in line with the previous few years.
And what we, what we've used in the past, you know, so it was just kinda getting in bed.
What does that mean, it's a system, can you be more descriptive to?
That's, um, like, um, for everything, like if something, uh, I need a hydrant, a hydrant, uh, gate valves, um, anything like that, you know, any waterworks, um.
Okay, we always carry a small inventory of all these extras, right, and that's probably what that is for, for you to be able to replenish.
Correct.
Inventory on a yearly basis, because the last thing, you can't go to the store at three o'clock in the morning, right, put it that way.
And the hydrants now are over two thousand dollars for one hydrant, so that's, you know what I mean, you get hydrants.
Yeah, but that's what that money does, it's really, says maintenance of system, but that's really for you to shelf certain things that you know that you replace, and if something where, you know, stuff hits the fan in an off hour, where you can't just run to the plumbing store and buy it, right?
Correct.
And you have stuff on the shelf and things of the like, so.
Okay.
Great, and then again, you did reduce that pretty dramatically last year. Which I think you're just not in the practice of doing with your DPW budget, because it's enterprise fund, it's fixed fee, so you cut it, but, I mean, you have to.
Um, and then the rest is all level funded, I, I'm thinking, right?
The new meters, we, do we pay them all with meters?
Oh, yeah, we went up a little on the meters, yep, that was the last one, cause they, the increase of meters.
They went up, the cost went up.
Yes.
Correct.
Right.
Yep, for the price of the meters and the amount they use.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
And we're consistently replacing those, is that how that works?
Well, we kinda slowed up a little for COVID.
We got an hard year this year with COVID.
Right, we're in the same.
We're gonna stop, and then we're gonna restart again, um, in about a week, I'm gonna send out letters, if people don't feel comfortable, we said, absolutely, that's fine, you let us know when you are, we're not pushing it this year, until people are.
I just got a letter from the gas company that wants to inspect my gas meter. And they said, we do take all safety precautions, if you want, I'll give you a copy of it, and you can kinda do it for.
And that'd be great.
I mean, they're going into the cellar, like most people are, I mean, I know that we have some people that have strange places where water meters are.
Our goal, our goal was three hundred a year, that's what we were doing.
That's the plan.
Cause we got three thousand users roughly, so we figured a ten year plan and have to stop right back over again, we, your wife's like good for fifteen, but if you do them within. We, your wife's like good for fifteen, but if you do them within that ten-year period, we keep track of it, we got books on them, so every year, you know, we just grab that other book, well, she's got all on her computer, but we got books done.
The Board, the Board of Selectmen did that, when we took over the Board, uh, Board of Public Works, when taxpayers dissolved the Board of Public Works, the Board came out with a plan for all of that, that's why it's all broken out in a water bill. You'll see a five-dollar a quarter fee for water, uh, meter fee, so it's all being paid for through the billing.
Betrayed.
Um, the debt that's in there, the two hundred and seven thousand dollars of debt.
And what happened was they were all done at once, a long time ago, a lot of them was done at one time.
Yeah.
So it's kind of, that was like a big burden to do all of them at once, you know, so that's why we kind of broke it up like that, and the Board. They're doing three hundred, that's our goal, so I mean, we were on a good, we were getting our three hundred done here.
Well, it's back up.
Yeah.
We have one, um, Mr. Ebru, he's pretty much our dedicated water meter replacement, um, employee.
Okay.
And the residents love him, he's got a great sense of humor, Silver will tell you that, we've been in the office before, with Mr. Silver talking to residents, um, they get a kick out of him, um, he's great at what he does, as far as that goes, he's got a sense of humor, even though people aren't happy, he twists it all around and makes it good, so, um, he does a great job out there. And we did do the, basically, like Dan said, three hundred, three thousand users in our water system, it might be just a hair under, so we could develop a ten-year plan, so we never have that problem, it's constant change out.
Very good.
Um, we strive for three hundred a year, you know, whether or not we hit that goal like Mr. Silver.
We keep track of it, like over the year, we did, oh, we did like three hundred and thirty, you know, and then last year, we were just straight up.
And you just have people that, you could replace a meter in year two, it could fail, so she'll get the call, or she'll see it on the meter read system, something's wrong with so-and-so's meter, and she sends Mr. Ebru out there right away and says, you need to go out and check that meter, because we haven't had a good read, and he normally uses, you know, in a quarter, a thousand cubic feet, and he's only using three hundred on none, or whatever, the meter's gone dead, so that's kind of the functionality.
The other upgrade to it, I mean, it costs a little extra, but the upgrade of these MTUs now, the radio reads, uh, they used to read, uh, once a day, and now they read hourly, so, which is really good, we'll know you have a leak before you do.
You've been running pipe in the winter, and you've got.
Yeah, so it alerts her right on her computer, so it's really, really good, it's been a, you know, and it's good for the residents even coming in and complaining about the bill. We can tell you what happened when you left your house.
Yeah.
Because it's telling you when that's going to shut off and on, you know, so, it does, it's really good system.
So I can contest that too, I've heard Ms. Silver explain to residents, that's not true, this is what you use, this is what happened, and things of the like. And she's even said, well, do you have a sprinkler system, or do you have the jump? The jump is in the July, August, September months, she knows right away, she's been doing it long enough, she can say, you must have a sprinkler set, and they're like, oh, yeah, I do, so, impacts it, so, Dan?
The sprinklers, are you guys, the deduct meters?
Yes.
Yes.
We have deduct meters, and anybody who has a sprinkler, and the deduct only deducts off your sewer. So you pay your water bill, and then whatever's used outside of your sprinkler, it's a deduct meter that tracks how much is going outside of your house, and we take that off your sewer bill.
Okay, but we charge for the deduct meter.
We do.
There's a fee for all of that stuff?
Yes.
We have a fee schedule, you have to see the fee schedule.
I have a while.
No, but you should have, you're a, you're a, you're a water and sewer commissioner, so maybe you ought to see the fee schedule so you can take a look at everything that goes on and, you know, correlate into the bills.
Hey, while we're on water, I, I guess I'm going to have that conversation, um, gentlemen, Mr. Manad and Ms. Silver put together a list, two thousand eighteen, and I, I reviewed this list, matter of fact, I asked for an article to do Niall right over here, across from the salon. It's left in the salon, it's over here, but Niall's right here, it goes from, it goes from Main Street here over to Slocum Street.
Right.
And, so Niall is like twelve hundred feet, Dan, you have that list, would you like, I got it right, I'll tell you. It's all alphabetical, it's very well done, so twelve hundred and twenty feet of pipe, we, we did an article at the last Town Meeting to replace the water, um, pipe, which is water infrastructure, so yes, I'm stuck on infrastructure because Dan's our infrastructure guy, and this is the time to speak on it. We have, um, as Mr. Manad's told us in the past, the Board of Selectmen in the past, significant pipe in the ground that have significant age to it, so I went through the list that Mr. Manad's done, he's, he actually did a list for water and sewer. Um, I have that list, and forty-one thousand ninety feet of pipe is seventy years or older. And that pipe is, most of that pipe is what they call AC pipe, right? Asbestos cement pipe, um, not good stuff, used to be used a lot in the forties, fifties, and sixties, and seventies, and then the EPA, and somewhere in the eighties, said, we abandoned that because it's not good. So anyways, we got forty-one thousand ninety feet of pipe that's seventy years or older. Of that pipe, of that forty-one thousand, two-thirds of that pipe is closer to a hundred years old. Not all of it is the AC pipe, some of it's cast iron, labeled CI on the list. The last, the newest pipe, I think they did in a, in a debt, and that's the debt that's in the water bill, that's twenty bucks a quarter.
I got, I get that actually with me, I kind of got the, it was five point five miles that were done in oh-five and oh-six.
Yeah, I mean, that's, on this, I'm only going by what you gave me, so two thousand seven, it looks like some of this pipe, this new is two thousand seven, and that's pretty much it.
Yep.
So what, what I'm, I'm asking is, and explaining to the folks at home and the Board is, we need to do something about this pipe, right? And we got an article for our crew to try to do the twelve hundred and twenty feet on Niall, and that's cast iron pipe, not asbestos pipe.
That's correct.
So, I don't know if we can manage that project in-house, I know that you always.
Well, that's what I was saying, um, you know, we can manage it, again, it's all manpower and, and funding.
I know.
Um, so something like that, we definitely need some more manpower because, to do our daily stuff, and especially if we're doing paving, we'd never be able to do both of them things, you know.
Here's what I, all I want to say, so I'm on the record.
Yep.
Um, because I've been on the record for a few years, talking about water infrastructure, because clearly we need to do something about hundred-year-old pipe in the ground. I know it's not attractive, and it's not classy, and, you know, who cares, um, I got water at my house, but, um, we should care about the water that we distribute, right? Um, and we've done well as a town, however, the AC pipe, the asbestos cement pipe, the longevity of that from everything I've read is fifty to seventy years, that's its shelf life, um, and a lot of this is well over that, um, some of it's a hundred years old. So, it's my recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and to you, our DPW Director and our Water and Sewer Superintendent, is we have just over a million dollars in surplus for the water enterprise fund, and we, and we generate roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year in surplus. I think it's time for the Board of Selectmen to have you do some work with some outside vendors and get some pricing, so that maybe the Board of Selectmen can come up with a five-year infrastructure plan for water infrastructure replacement. We have the funds, it, it's absolutely overdue, just like a lot of our road paving is, and I would like to see the Board of Selectmen come up with a five-year water infrastructure plan and allocate two hundred thousand dollars a year for water infrastructure replacement, and that will only put a very small dent, but at least we're working towards the goal that we should be working towards, water and sewer commissioners. We have that obligation to our water and sewer users to make sure that we're investing their money appropriately in infrastructure. So I would like to, and not by you, Dan, I, I think that we have a lot of things on, on the DPW's plate, and our crew is very small in nature. I think that if we just try to find out, we know how much the pipe is, you priced it out for the Niall project, right? We're probably not going to make a huge dent in it, but we need to start doing something with our water infrastructure, right?
And maybe at that time, maybe we could look, because if I get some prices, you know, of, you know, contracted out, I mean, I don't know if that's something you would, you know, entertain, would be, you know, hiring a few more guys and doing, it's definitely going to be half the money doing it in-house is, is.
I'd like to look at it at all different angles, as much as we can, um, but you gave us this list in two thousand eighteen, and I've been looking at this list for a while now, and, you know, it's, it's disturbing. I mean, I know it's great to put flower pots down the street and where people can visibly see things and, and build park benches and everything else, and that's all great stuff, but the reality of it is, is we have an obligation, government has an obligation to provide safe drinking water to our residents, right? And I think we need to start taking action, the last, the newest pipe I see is two thousand seven, um, it's time. When we took over the Board of Public Works in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, we didn't have a big surplus, so we didn't have any cash reserve to go after without creating debt on our water users. We have a decent amount of surplus now because the plan worked, I think it's time for the, this discussion from the Board of Selectmen to say, yes, we need to do something about it, um, and we need to start replacing the water pipe, and I think that'll be our job, where you look at this piece of paper, and if you've got two streets that have hundred-year-old pipe that are side by side, that's what we want to get done, those two streets right away, because that keeps the project cost down while the contractor's there, he doesn't have to float to the other side of town and move all his equipment, that's how we'll set it up to do, that'll be up to you, Dan, you're the, you're the, you're the Director, right? Um, but I, I, I would like to see us do something with our water surplus, instead of letting it sit there, knowing we have water pipe a hundred years old. Slocum Street, um, has like nineteen hundred feet of water pipe that's a hundred years old. I know Cleveland Street, right, is nineteen twenty, Niall's up nineteen twenty, um, Slocum Street.
Slocum would be a good stop, I mean, that's one of the.
Slocum's a big problem, Slocum Street says we have nineteen hundred, and it's probably one of, it's probably our oldest water pipe, nineteen sixteen is when it was put in, we have Slocum Street again listed here, four hundred and fifty was done in nineteen sixty, so I don't know what four hundred and fifty was done in nineteen sixty, so that's still pretty reasonable. I can, I can tell you this, if we start appro, if we start grabbing all the hundred and stop moving backwards, I just told you, we have forty-one thousand feet, seventy-five years of age, there's a law on this list that if we had a five-year plan or a ten-year plan, by the time we completed the five-year or ten-year, you'd have another forty thousand feet that are seventy years old already. So it's kind of a continuous thing that would be kind of non-stop, um, we have the funding now in surplus to do it, I think it's time we do it. Regardless of, we get three streets done, five streets done, whatever we get done, it needs to get done. Um, and we need to spend that surplus, we can't just sit around and collect money in the kitty.
Now, is that something you have to go through Town Meeting to put out there?
Anything that's spent from surplus needs Town Meeting appropriation, so once we do our due diligence on our end and we start figuring things out, and we have more dialogue with the Board in the future, uh, whether I'm here or not, uh, remains to be seen. Um, but I just wanted to open up that discussion, because I think it's an important discussion to have, um, all I am here. And we did do it last year, we have, we got a hundred and fifty thousand, I think, for Niall, so, it is, it is what it is, um, it's a discussion. I feel much better getting it off my chest, I've talked about it in the past, I don't know how many people are listening, I hope, there's a lot of people listening right now, um, including Selectman DeRoche and Selectman Wonah, they, they have a few years left in their term, so let's, let's figure this out and, uh, try to come up with a plan, you're the DPW Director, it's under your purview, you've done great work thus far with everything we've charged you to do, Dan. I'm sure that, uh, within no time, you'll have answers for the Board on how to move forward with us. And if we create a five-year plan, and we get things accomplished, and we'll see where we are at the end of the five-year plan as a town, perhaps, at that point in five years, the Board of Selectmen, um, might have to make that choice on whether or not they go out and do a debt exclusion for the water users like was done back in two thousand, whatever it was. Whatever they did the last one, I think it was probably around that two thousand five.
When is, when is that done anyways?
So Julie, I have a good, another good question for you, seeing now we're talking about money. The DPW carries two hundred and seven thousand dollars roughly in, in principal and interest, right? And my debt sheet shows that that won't be paid off. Ooh, ooh, you spilled some water right there. Count that, see your water loss came out of the bowl. Um, so we, water main replacement number one, two thousand forty-three, water main replacement two A and two B, two thousand forty-five, water main replacement number three, two thousand forty-six, so when we established a billing criteria, when we took over, again, the Board of Public Works, we broke that number out, and the reason why I pushed for that number to be broken out on the billing was so that anywhere down the road, if I went to Town Meeting and I said, what is this, if somebody asked the question, what does this mean to me, a water user, you could easily point, or anybody from the Board of Selectmen could easily point at the bill and say, you know the twenty bucks a month, a quarter that you pay, that needs to go to thirty, are you okay with that? And it's that simple for everybody, right? And this is what we're getting done, this is what the project scope is, and you would lay out on a map and show everybody all the water infrastructure that's going to be placed for a ten million dollar, twenty million dollar borrow, whatever it was. I'm sure that whenever this was, that's the schedule of final payment I just gave, so two thousand forty-three is the earliest one, that's why we broke that out and separated it, right? Um, I think at that point, whatever it may be, once we're done using up surplus, and even after the end of five years, if you spent two hundred thousand dollars, at the end of five years, the surplus should still have a half a million dollars left in its kitty for now. Um, if this Board so chooses to have the bigger discussion with water users, um, about another debt service, and increase that fee, the water debt service on their bill, that remains to be seen, right? I don't know what kind of money we're talking about. So Julie, my question to you is, if I looked at the debt sheet, um, and if it was done in the two thousand five era, that borrowing, let's just say it was done in the, it's got to be like a forty-year borrow, if it was done in the two thousand five, two thousand seven, right? It's not, if it doesn't expire until two thousand forty-six, forty-three's the earliest, forty-six is the latest, so like a forty-year borrow, I don't even know, I mean, can they borrow that long?
Uh, I mean, if they did, then, yeah, they're allowed to. I mean, typically, you see twenty years or thirty years.
So here's, here's the question I would ask you to ask the, the Town Treasurer, um, what's the borrowing rate? Because on that debt, on this debt sheet right here, even on the budget, gentlemen, if you look at the Water Department's budget, you see the interest y'all paying is almost two times the amount of principal y'all paying, that's nuts. And on this debt sheet, it's a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and that was in two thousand thirteen, we were paying an interest for all those phases, right? And we were paying fifty-five towards the principal, it's almost a three to one ratio.
Yeah.
That's insane, so what I would, what I would guess is that our borrowing cost, the interest rate that we borrow on is got to be somewhere around six, seven, eight percent, whatever, it's got to be some kind of cockamamie number to equal that much money.
Is that something you can redo?
So that's my question to Ms. Ebru.
Usually you can, once, and I'm guessing if it was two thousand five, we haven't already refinanced it.
We weren't in control, the Board of Selectmen at that time.
I can find out though.
So I know we, we refinanced the debt on the golf course that helped lower that principal and interest dramatically.
Yeah.
So where I'm going with, if we can refinance the debt and erase some of that burden of interest, right? Principal may remain the same, if we can save a boatload off that interest, that'll be additional surplus, and we can do more infrastructure, right? You see where I'm going? Without increasing the rate, an impact in the water users, that's always the goal first, right? How much can we actually do for the money we have? Um, last resort is always going to the taxpayers and asking for more money, so I think that's, that's a pretty good strategy.
I'm just looking at this debt too, and one of them is at four and a half percent.
Do you agree?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think I agree in total that we need to address the water, I mean, Congress is talking about a major infrastructure bill, just like America saves, so we, there's, I think there's going to be a ton of money out there, uh, available, but big picture, yes, we should absolutely look to address the, uh, the water situation.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that, Congress, one, things are the others. Two, what? Just wanted to get that out. You agree, Dan, I mean, I don't, I don't, I know we have that article, um, there's a lot of work, after speaking with Mr. Manad on that project, there's a lot of work that goes into laying that pipe, it's not dig the trench where the existing water line is, now you have to tap into all the services for each individual house, there's gate valves involved in that, um, so perhaps that might.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Have to wait, let's get some, let's get some prices.
Yep.
And I know it sucks right now because we're in a so-called booming economy.
Yeah.
So everybody's inflated their prices, right, because the man's high, so it's not really a great time, um, to go after these things because, you know, it's a money grab, right? That's tough. So, we'll figure it out.
All right.
I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to have that discussion, though, and, um, get that ball rolling. Gentlemen, are you guys okay with the water budget now?
Yep.
Motion to approve the water budget as presented?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sewer reserve fund, doesn't look like much happened here, Dan.
Nope.
Motion to approve as presented? Unless you guys have questions, there's nothing. Unless you guys have questions, there's nothing, no, no real impact yet.
Roll it down first, I'm all second.
All those in favor?
Alright, night.
Dan?
I have a favor.
Did you do CMAAS?
No, that's the one we're up to, yep.
I don't think so. I thought we started by the CMAAS.
Sewer, did you just vote the whole sewer though? Or just the first part of sewer? Sorry.
We voted the sewer enterprise and water enterprise as presented. There was no changes to water or sewer, right?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
I was making sure.
Their enterprise fund, it's not, it's not taxation, pay by user fees, so. CMAAS, tab form. It's snowing ice. CMAAS. Dan?
Yes.
You got your CMAAS budget?
We do.
So we already know what happened with incinerator?
Yep. So this is all, these are all actual.
Incinerator we discussed before with the garbage hauling fees.
That's, that's actually CMAAS. That was the one we discussed, we discussed both of them. That's the one that's going up to ninety dollars a ton.
And it went from sixty-two?
Yes.
Sixty-two to ninety.
And you approved that in one of the meetings. And then we also discussed the waste management, and they won the contract.
Yeah.
So that's only, that's only a four thousand dollar increase for next year. Oh, and also, that's going to include the golf enterprise fund, so they need to be made aware of that. They are going to pick up golf under this contract.
Well, yeah, okay.
So they.
So if they have a separate contract.
Somebody, somebody a few years ago stuck them, the golf enterprise fund, were getting their own dumpster, right?
Well, I think it was something to do with golf play or something.
It wasn't, actually, they weren't in our contract with Howland. But Howland was picking them up anyway. And what happens when Waste Management took over, they asked for a copy of the contract, and they went by the words of what we had in that contract. And they said, this is what we are, this is what we want.
That's right, when Howland will want all my waste management.
So Waste Management took them, and they said golf, and they're on, then we will not pick them up. That was not on the contract.
So a deal, I mean, what was that? I mean, what do they put?
I'm not sure what they have. Thousand dollars in for trash removal.
So we can make them aware that I have included it in this contract, and they, and I did talk to them to ask how often they need picked up, and they should be good starting July first.
So they can remove that?
They can remove it from there.
So Julie, can you make that correction?
Oh, so it's not going to charge golf's account?
Not at all. They should not have a separate bill going to golf from Waste Management or whoever they've been using for the past year or two.
Good. Is the board alright with that?
Yeah.
Don't want to change, don't want to really change the contract. I mean, it's penis.
One thing, I didn't put in this budget, something to think about. I figured I'll throw it out there while we're talking about CMAAS. I know you go by there, Kevin, and I see all you guys, Dave goes by there as well. It's getting busier and busier over that place, and it's, I see a lot more material and stuff coming in than usual. And I just feel that one guy, it's almost impossible to check, you know, keep track of all the vehicles coming in and watch what they're throwing and where they're putting it, you know? Especially with the swap shop and everything that's rolling. It's, it's almost looking like it needs two people to, to run that, to man that on Friday and Saturdays, you know? One person like to come in, check all the vehicles, make sure they got the, you know, their stickers and, you know, cushion of resonance. And, you know, the other guy can watch and, you know, go over the lead pile, the brush pile, or, you know, the swap shop, so. That was something to think about.
I'm glad you brought that up because I was out there, I don't know, what it used to was, whatever, last week or whatever, it was closed, but two weeks ago, whatever it was, and Peter was out there. And the place was swamped. And he had the gate closed, and he had the gate. Well, this, this, this is, this is really screwed up, and some people just don't get it. He had the gate closed to the waste oil tank because it's full. Somebody seen the fifty-five gallon drum, they forgot to put the cap back on it, and it just, and it overflowed. And I seen it. He was already gone, but I seen it, and I was like, well, that's, and he goes, goddamn gate's closed, so. And it is, it's, it's.
It's hard, it's hard for one guy to watch.
Dan, we did something, we extended hours between certain months, right? Give a couple more hours.
Doing all the time. I mean, it's, I'll tell you, I think that's an asset. I'll tell you, everybody really loves that place. It seems like that's a very.
You tell me about it. Remember when COVID first started and we closed that down over the period of time? People, well, rate people were? And it wasn't really even prime time season yet. Could you imagine not doing it? So, hey, you know what?
Something to think about in the future, again, if you guys going through budgets, if there's any kind of available funds, maybe we can kind of allocate a little towards that, or even if, you know?
I think I don't, I can tell you this. You got equipment rental, let's talk about the big dog, right?
Okay.
The big dog is, for CMAAS anyway, is we normally five, six, seven thousand bucks and eighty grand this year. And I know a little bit about it, but if you want to explain it, so.
Well, I took it down because.
You like a fifty?
Yeah, we down to fifty, just because the more, the more, because we were gonna, thinking of doing the box mulch, you know, grinding that stuff up and adding back and color and this and that to.
Oh, yeah, we did that awhile.
So that's why we took that cost down. The real big number here, we still screen with that, with the screening alone and stuff like that, which we're going to probably do again this year. And then we, we got some income from it last year, sold some loan to some people. The biggest thing is crushing. We got a big pile of crushing, we ain't crushed in a couple of years.
That's what I wanted to ask you. What's, we got, we got some really big piles right now that need to be processed. So the crusher is the big cost to get rid of those big behemoth piles.
Yeah, it comes in and crushes, and it makes it into a product that we can use for our roads and stuff like that. And winds up being less than half the cost of even buying it from P.G. Keaton or any, any core, you know what I mean? So the process material it makes is really good. We use actually all that stuff for the school parking lot.
Yeah, sure.
When we did that back in the day last time with Crush.
Lake Street coming up?
Huh?
Lake Street.
Yeah, no, no, that's.
I know, we do, we use a ton of that stuff.
So, but the thing is, it's just costly, and we haven't done it in.
Even some of our streets that are technically accepted, but they're not paved. We go and, you guys, I've seen you guys go down and put the process gravel down to, to help keep them roads in somewhat decent condition too, right?
Correct, every year.
Use all the time. We actually do a little bit sometimes with the side streets, and we got complaints about residents with the width of the road. We've actually just did one where we've, you, I say we, we, the town, but you widened the road a little bit and used that kind of material for it as well. So it's always got a purpose.
Correct.
Is, is eighty, so what'd you do? You reduced it to fifty?
Reduced it to fifty. And then again, that's still high because of the crushing, because we haven't crushed in, that's like five thousand bucks a day. So we need at least a week's worth of work there. So it's at least twenty-five grand for that.
What's the other twenty-five grand?
We do screening, the screening alone, so again, we rent, rent that out. And then the other thing is the, the tub grinding. We also do that as well.
What's that?
It's, it's a big tub grinder we rent, actually, New England Recycling comes in with a big machine, and it's got a grapple. We feed him, and then he just grinds up all our, all our brush, all our stump's brush that gets all ground up. That's why we're thinking about making mulch out of it. Currently, right now, we'll give it to anybody who wants it and follow up. We use it like, you know, it's good for ground cover in the woods and stuff. Do we use it on different projects?
Are you good? I mean, we only usually do seven grand and.
Again, this was really crushing.
I just have a quick question. Is this like, you talked about concrete and asphalt? Is that from our town projects or?
Yeah, and plus residents, we've been allowing residents to bring it in just because we've been crushing in the past. And it's, again, it's less than half of buying a product. You know, if it's costing us ten dollars a ton, it's costing us like four.
We sell that stuff? I thought we talked about selling that, process gravel stuff. Come on, people make driveways and stuff out of that.
Yeah, they will, but we did not, we have not. We've used, we use it for all our projects and stuff, so.
Yeah, we did blow through a lot of it.
Yeah, even like, you know, like, you think even drainage jobs and stuff. The material we come out, we use that, all the pipes and everything, so it's, I mean, so it is definitely big savings. But again, because we got such a big pile, and we haven't done it in years, that's why that's the cost of, you know, I mean, usually it's only like ten grand to do that.
You can get rid of those monster piles in one week?
Well, that's what I'm saying, a week, you know, maybe, you know, seven days.
You got enough to do for two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, we got to put a little extra in this, so, yeah.
So this year.
It's gonna be rough there.
Is that something we should do? Should we do that? Will we do that every year?
I mean, if you got that, we don't usually got that kind of material in there in one year.
Should we do an article instead of budget?
I mean, that's up to you guys. If you, I mean, it shouldn't, yeah, it shouldn't be an every year occurrence, no, correct.
So instead of putting that money in the budget, should we, because we're already increased, this budget's already gone up. This is CMAAS again, which is all recycling and things of the like.
Yeah, this is like a, I mean, it's, it's not going to be every year for crushing, correct? So.
I don't know, what's the board's pleasure? I mean, we could, you've been, say, seventy-five hundred bucks every year? Do we do ten grand in the budget and then do an article for fifty grand? I mean, if you're talking about deficits.
See what happened in the past, though.
Sooner or later, you got to be real close with the FinCom, Julie. That's, we, deficits, deficits, right? I mean, we, the timeline has come to an end. So, I mean, I know we're going to try to use as little as free cash as possible, but I mean, we're talking about that, should we?
I'm for it. You know, again, tangible results. For?
For throwing it as an article or?
Yeah.
So you want to reduce that line item? So what we're saying is maybe reduce it to ten grand.
Okay.
Line item. Gives you a little bit extra for.
Well, see, like I said, I usually, like, a lot of times it's crushing, I've been taking out my road materials in the past.
Can you stop doing that? I know you're doing it because you need to do it because you can shain on finances. So you're not, you just take me to a different place, Dan. I don't want to be stealing from Peter to pay Paul.
No, no, but I mean, it's part of the recycling, but we've been taking it out of.
Yeah, but now you're taking it from my highway to bond.
So like ten thousand doesn't cover crushing, that's only two days of crushing. Like, we still screen and.
No, we got fifty grand, we're going to go for an article for fifty grand.
Okay.
And what I'm saying, if you put this line item to ten grand, you've always had seven, seventy-five hundred, gives you a couple extra grand to do what you need to, and.
Okay.
And equipment rental. There's articles, there's, there's way too much spending in that, but this is something, this is, this is something that's clearly should be funded with an article. I mean, there's other things that are on the wish list, of course, everybody's got a wish list, right? I wish I had a million dollars. So I'm going to ask for that in an article and see if the taxpayer doesn't give it to me.
I'm, I'm okay with moving it to an article.
I mean, I think if it's not, if it's, if it's, if it's not a yearly or pre-occurrence, then it shouldn't be in the budget, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I agree.
So we'll do as an article. Julie, can you set that up in the articles? I know you gave us the articles, but I mean, with the Board of Selectmen and the timeline, we're going to do that.
So what are we going to do? We're going to do thirty, forty?
Fifty for an article?
Oh, you're going to do fifty, and I'm not going to need the fifty though.
What do you want, thirty?
Well, I'm just saying it for, if it's, I want it fifty, but.
I want to get rid of all that stuff and you, your nice clean yacht, so we don't have to worry about that big pile.
Yeah. I mean, if, if you don't use it, you can always reuse it for another year, right?
If it's in an article.
Yeah, for crushing, yeah.
If it's in, if it's in your budget, it gets returned to the general fund.
Okay, I'm good with that, yeah.
So if we do thirty grand in an article, what do you want, fifty grand or thirty grand?
So we're going to forty? What the difference? There you go, forty and that's.
You want to go forty thousand dollars for an article?
And I'm going to take the equipment rental and put it down to ten for this year, is that what it is?
Correct. Yeah, he needs, he needs some money in CMAAS, it's all, most of that. Dan?
Yes.
This budget, some of this budget is, I mean, I know it's a million, too, but some of that money we get back on, on recyclable stuff like scrap things.
Yes, we've been, you know, and stuff like now, we've been, you know, all the stuff for couches, anything that's been, you know, people have paid.
Oh, that's right, we set up that program where we.
All that stuff, we got some, we got a little bit on loan last year. We weren't set up, but we did get some, and stuff like that, yeah, we are getting some funds coming back to the.
Alright, cool. And this, Julie?
Yeah.
Did we, do we even set up a revolving fund for that?
That's, that, that's in the article list, yeah.
I seen something about revolving funds, I didn't pay too much attention to, I'm trying to.
I threw that in there, and then I talked about.
Gentlemen, you good with CMAAS now? So we reduced the equipment rental to ten thousand bucks, and we'll do an article for forty thousand bucks.
Very good.
Sound good, Mr. Minad?
Yes, it's very good.
So we make a motion to approve the CMAAS article with the changes discussed this afternoon. Got a second?
All those in favor?
Alright.
Julie, you give us any updated budget on this? Always give us that copies.
Julie, do you want to update article from that one?
Yeah, I'll work with you just then. I'm going to add it to the capital, I think, so.
We're going to go over the articles next, or is that?
Dan, so, yeah, I, we, we got to, we got to talk to you about a couple of articles. Alright, just for the simple reason we can discuss. Dan, Cath, have you picked up schedule? We talked about it, we had a schedule, it was canceled by Board of Health. We tried putting it back on. CMAAS was doing something in the fall. I spoke with Cath, and what's the deal?
So CMAAS is working, they have, they work five days a week, obviously, taking the trash from all the towns. So CMAAS is working. They have to, they work five days a week, obviously, taking the trash from all the towns. So we can really only do it on Saturday with Dan's schedule and CMAAS's schedule, but unfortunately, they do their maintenance on the machines for bulky items, which is what we'll be picking up um in the month of April. Um, and maybe probably full month of May, so it won't be available the earliest. So at this point would be sometimes end of May, beginning of June. They said for me to talk to them, middle of May.
Okay.
So as soon as I have a date and we have an idea of what we wanna do, I will come back and talk to you.
Yeah, sounds good.
We'll come right to, you know, and then we can actually put the sign out.
Well, we gotta, we gotta do a little, you know, and things about.
Oh, yeah, put on the website.
Whatever will work for you, Cath. You you've been heading this off since day one. Keep in communication with CMAAS.
I will.
Once they give us the approval saying that we can get out there and dump the stuff. I hate to have everything brought, it would really suck to bring everything down to the, it doesn't make sense, economic sense to bring everything to the town yard and let it pile up there. Then you have to load it again and then drive it down. That doesn't make any sense. We gotta kinda be in sync, right?
Could I just, one request, which I don't even think I mentioned to Mr. Manat, so I apologize. The three, the three Saturdays that we do in a row, um, this is just my my brain thinking, we're gonna pick three Saturdays in a row that works for them so they can get all the roots done. Those three Saturdays that they will be picking up these large items which are out there. If anybody chooses to bring it to the recycling center themselves, shouldn't it be free those three weekends?
I go along with that.
No.
Just because, I mean, if they're gonna, some people can throw it in a truck, you know.
I go, I go along with that. It's gonna save a lot more time and energy on our staff, so.
Yeah.
Compliments of us, yeah, absolutely. I mean, on on those three, I like that idea a lot. That's a great idea. I really do.
Free weekend.
Well.
Would just be those three Saturdays.
It's 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 only again, we gotta think about this because we limited it to three items, right? So we don't want Dave going down there every Saturday, dropping off three on each Saturday. It makes it nine items.
And then leave three in front of his house.
So we're gonna keep an eye on it.
DeRoch will come by and tell you for his own house.
So we we just wanna keep an eye on that.
I I have a question. Is there a fee? Is that what?
We charge a fee um to the residents. If they're gonna bring things to the recycling center, they have to pay. To get rid of a mattress, to get rid of a TV.
Correct, correct.
There's a list of things you pay for, then there's a list of things that are free to bring there. Um, we have that on our website, and that's what we're doing right now. So they can bring them to the recycling center themselves every Friday or Saturday all year long. Or they can always call waste management and they charge twenty-eight dollars right now.
They're ridiculous.
To pick up. If somebody can't, if somebody can't get it there, they can charge, they'll they'll do it for them.
You got a truck.
Terrible. That's terrible. That that price that they gave us is ridiculous, is what it is. So we do have a price schedule online.
Yes.
Um, and what Cath, what they have to do is pre-schedule, right? So they come in and they make a payment.
Yes.
They get a sticker saying what they're paid to drop off a mattress, a TV, whatever it is, and they go through the gate. They show it to whoever's working recycling. They say, yep, one TV. That dumpster. It's over. And we do a pretty good job with our fees as far as cost.
Yes, that's an analysis that I would love to do. If we actually get this revolving fund, it'll be amazing, cause then I can see what we're bringing the money in, because we do keep track in the collector's office and the DPW, whoever's taking the the checks in, we have, we fill out this form. They said they brought in a TV or a couch. But then when we turn around, we'll know how much we're taking in versus how much we're charging. So are we charging too much? Are we not charging enough for TVs? So that's gonna be a great analysis to do to know if we should increase our prices or decrease our prices.
Alright, so Cath, Dan, just keep us updated as best you can when CMAAS gives us the green light. And gentlemen, I don't think we have anything else to discuss with Mr. Manat and Miss Silver.
How about the articles?
Oh, sugar.
I mean, you're kinda the same as.
So there's only a couple in there. She gave us the whole, all this Leonard was kind enough to print out. All of this stuff, but I think, I think the only ones that you have is, it's under eleven, which is a bunch of different.
Capital.
Capital expenses. It says DPW, new loader for two eighty-five, DPW new sweeper, two seventy-five, and then number twelve would be yours.
And that would be.
That's the conditional.
If the, if the loader doesn't go through, then that's what we decided, okay?
Okay, that was, that was the plan, right?
Yep, okay.
Um, take another.
And then the other one would be.
Swing at the apple.
And then the crushing.
Yeah, well, I'll crush it.
The what?
The crushing.
The extra forty thousand.
Crushing for, crushing the.
Oh, the new, yeah, but we just did that, that's all.
I already added.
Confuse me.
I added it in my paper already.
So if I can, I'm, cause I didn't get to ask Kathy about the revolving. I did put it in here. And for revolving, we have to say, um, set the maximum that can be spent from the revolving fund, and I put ten thousand. I have no clue what you guys would really need to spend from it, but if you wanna increase that, I can update the article as well.
It's not really a, I wouldn't want, it's more like just so we can um calculate. I really don't need the spending part of it, right?
And that that would be a max that gets um put in every year, so you can't spend more than that. Even if you have the money, you can only spend up to that maximum amount.
And we don't have to spend that money.
No, that's what I'm saying, we're already in a thing. I don't want nothing to spend. We're just kinda getting these things that we kinda know.
So we figure it out, that'd be fine.
With the funds going, how much funds, yeah.
Miss Hebert?
Yep.
Um, by law, under the revolving fund, isn't there a maximum amount you can collect?
No, it's the max that you can spend.
There's a max that you can spend, not collect?
Yeah.
Very good.
Yep.
So.
Don't keep going.
I don't know.
Well, we kinda write, write.
I know there was a max somewhere, well.
Well, I mean, it'd be kinda nice to know what we're at, because then next year we probably wouldn't have to go, say, we did collect ten thousand dollars through all this stuff, so now that could be take ten thousand out of that budget for next year. You get where we're getting at? So we're putting this money to run the, the operation where if we're collecting ten thousand, you wouldn't need that money to run the operation, so. But right now, we have no way of knowing, you know, we got some at the collectors, some over our places. I don't know what funds we.
Well, we'll see. We should do it. I mean, really, we should do a test and do a pilot program, right? See what we come up with after one fiscal year in revenues collected from.
I have no, I have no problem not spending any money out of that revolving fund next year. We have the budget we have. We should be able to stick to that. Revolving, it should, would be great to just see how much money we're taking in.
Yeah.
And I don't know how much detail I could get from you. We can talk about that, Julie, because I would like to know where that money's coming from, but.
I don't think it would hurt. CNN, there's a a a law that says the maximum amount you can spend. I don't, I don't think it would hurt to put a number with it.
She said ten thousand.
So you create the revolving fund and we can, and we surely can put all those receipts, right? Inside of that revolving fund. It'll be like charged back to the revolving fund or whatever, so we know exactly what we accumulated in revenue. But I I think it would probably be a good idea to have a small amount of money in it that allows spending out of it in case of emergencies and things of the like that we would need as a buffer.
Do I call it the Dan Fund?
It's, why don't we call it the Ice Cream, Ice Cream Fund?
But essentially that's.
We all know what the Ice Cream Fund is, right, Mr. Manat?
But that's why, you know, by law, everything has to be appropriated at a town meeting, so that's why for revolving, they they set the max, and that's the way that you appropriate the expenses that go into that account. So right now I have it as the money that comes in, our fees charged and received at the town recycling center, and the expenses that can be paid from the fund are maintenance costs, supplies, equipment, and contracted services related to the recycling center operations. I left it pretty general.
That's perfect, cause that's people who've been paying up.
It should just be similar to all the other. We got like four or five revolving funds.
We do, yeah.
We created one not too long ago, I think for Park Department or something, I mean.
Yeah, and so essentially, I'm, I'll put ten thousand in for this year. Depending on how things go, you can always change the amount. You have to vote the amount every year at town meeting, but um at least we'll have it in there. We can.
That sounds good. Sounds good.
You have to vote the amount every year on town meeting, what they're allowed to expend out of it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. So gentlemen, we have, um, GPW, few articles, new loader, two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. We all know. I tried last town meeting for the appropriation. Um, there was some resistance from a couple of individuals on town meeting floor, which spiraled into more dialogue and in the eventual, eventual failure of the expenditures for that article for a GPW loader. Then we asked Mr. Manat to come up with what it would cost to repair and the tranny and things of the like. He had them come out and do an assessment on the loader. Um, given a few extra little things while we had the machine in service. Um, if we were gonna take it out of service and put it in service on a repair facility. Um, it looks like that number's eighty-five, ninety grand. The article's for ninety thousand bucks. I was in, I'm always in the mindset, and I think we just talked a little bit about this, is if you have the cash to do it, do it instead of creating debt. Um, I'm not a fan of debt. You, it 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 restricts so many people by creating debt, right? Um, I'm talking just in your own personal life, right? And leads to a lot of headaches. Sure, it's easy to go and borrow ten million bucks and make yourself look like a hero, but trying to do it the way we've just outlined it, I think is more appropriate, and I think that's what's gone. This board to where we've been as a community and getting things done. So I know that there's a lot of wants, and I can see the bottom line number that we have here just in capital. Hey, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, you know, we can. I'm willing to give it another go-around on town meeting floor. And see what happens this year. I don't know what my board members think, but, you know, I was supportive of the last go-around.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, support, non-support, I don't know if that's the point. Uh, this issue was brought up before the townspeople at the town meeting six months ago, and it was voted the way it was voted. So to bring it up again in front of them, are we gonna get a different result? There are gonna be different people there, have a different opinion. Is the same point's gonna be brought up again? That was just brought up just six months ago. You know, Dan's provided us with an alternative for the, to the loader, to refurbish it, bring it up to snuff. And, uh, you know, I know it's about thirty thousand, I mean, thirty percent of the cost of a new one, but, um, you know, I'd take it, at this time, I'd take it under advisement, but my comments, I don't think are gonna change in in the sense. You know, when I would see the total amount of of articles being appropriated, what people asking for money, that could, you know. You know, I'm, I'm pretty, I know where you stand, and you know where I, where I all stand on this one.
I I go, look, I go either way. I've been a big supporter of infrastructure and and GPW. But if, when the townspeople speak, you have to be respectful of that voice, right? And I am, and and the reality of it is, is, um, I think I spoke on it before when we were discussing articles with the board. Um, and I said, I surely don't wanna be the one that makes that call because the loader, and I know it was talked about that they're made to repair it, and I agree with all of that, all of those things that are said, but I think that we have to understand that we've been very fortunate with winter storms. Um, I don't want the one, I don't wanna be the one telling a resident that we can't get to their house to clear that tree um or clear the snow, whatever it may be, that that.
That machine went out the next day, right after the town meeting, and we got a police call.
From wind, right? So I mean, I don't, I don't, when it comes to something like that, I mean, this is, we call it the beast for a reason, right? It's it's the beast. If it it gets called to duty, um, that's the machine that's gonna blow those roads wide open in case of a bad storm. Um, Dan, we talked about it prior to that. We lost road drive, I think it was, right? A few, I think it was two thousand fifteen, winter storm, those back-to-back storms when people were driving over, and we had like six inches of ice. We had to call in a bunch of other loaders to go in and try to help us break that road. Um, you know, that's what that, the beast does. Um, it's there for the big jobs. And this, and this machine, Dan's, Dan said it before, I mean, it's not your typical loader, like was mentioned on town meeting floor by a couple of people, and I totally get that. When you're on a job site, it's on the job site and it's only moving around in certain parts. This thing's gotta travel all over town. Um, when it goes from one place to another, you don't load it onto a trailer and take it to a job site. You drive it there, so. I think that was the difference that you were trying to make to to the board, so I, I, whatever, I can.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have to decide this today, right?
No, we don't. I just wanted Mr. Manat to be able to vet it out.
Yeah, I'm just going straight up. I mean, this is not even what I think.
Yep, that's all we're doing, is voting things out.
It was voted at town meeting and.
Yep.
I reckon I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I was at town meeting. I think we need to present it a little differently. I think, looking back on it, at town meeting, we didn't, we didn't tell people what we were, what would, how would it impact the budget, or what would people, you know, what would people lose out on if we spent on this? You know what I mean? I think we gotta figure out on something like this, we gotta really button up our presentation. Um, that's not a criticism to you. I think it's just, in retrospect, the way it was presented, you know, I think people have got a feeling like, if we pay for this, then we're blowing our budget, right? And that that clearly wasn't the case, but now given this budget cycle, it may be a different impact, but as far as conceptually, I'm on board. I'm on board with it. No problem.
So new sweeper, let's go to the next one, cause we're already taking articles under advisement. I wanted to grab you because we're, we're gonna be doing articles next week. We gotta, we gotta push this as fast as we can. Unfortunately, we started the process a little bit late for all the other reasons that we mentioned already.
Yeah.
Um, whatever. And I'm trying to do my best to get, schedule meetings. We're basically trying to plow this thing through and, you know.
Yeah.
We can only do as much as we're being given to do, so.
I agree, it's only so much money to go around, but.
And.
This is another one for the sweeper. This is one where I keep sinking my money into this one. Um, unfortunately, it was an older one. It's all G S P, it's chains. Um, all the new ones are hydraulic lines, hydraulic motors, a lot simpler. If something happens, you blow a hydraulic line. This one's got like ten million wear parts. The arms of one of the brooms is all, we gotta go find another one where it's getting old. You can't even get the pots for the thing. Um, so that's, that's where we're at on that one. I mean, it's out there. I mean, again, we don't, you know, we, I checked into it last year about like hiring that out if something happened to. So that's another option if it does break.
Yeah.
You know, which is, but that is beating up my, you know, that IRM equipment budget is that, that's, you were asking about the cost.
Yeah, 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 I know. We don't use it, you know, we only use the street stream a lot, half dozen times a year.
No, it's like thirty times, I I think we had, yeah.
Really?
He fills out the thing for water. You gotta fill that thing with water, you know, for the thing of dust, yeah.
I thought we only did it a few times for the season, like especially after.
No, it's all the leaves, it's all the, the beginning of season, um, leaves and stuff in the fall, all that cleanup, yeah, it's, it's.
Well, can you, can you, can you, did you, I mean, outsource it?
I thought, if I remember correctly, I thought it was like a thousand a day. We got, I got for a number, so it would be thirty grand to outsource it, you know, for the thirty times that we used it.
That's ten years.
Huh?
That's ten years for the cost of this one.
Correct.
And then we don't have no liability for insurances, and we don't have no liabilities for repairs and maintenance to it. I don't know.
Well, that was last year.
No, I know.
And like you said, it's a different market now, so I don't know if it's the same number, but that was the number I I got last time.
Hmm. I mean, it's nice to have new, 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 but I mean, if it's, you know.
I mean, I would, I mean, it just newer would be nice, too, just with the have the, um, instead of all the sprockets and chains.
But if you own it, then you can use it.
Yeah, I mean.
When you see a situation you need to address, boom, you don't have to, right?
We have.
So it's less of a schedule thing. You may use it more than thirty times a year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If you have it at your disposal, you can really attack neighborhoods and get in there and provide a better service to the residents, you know?
I mean, we have fuel spills. We had to clean up with that. You know what I mean? You're using it, you know, putting down sand and cleaning it up and so.
I I just, when I, when I look at articles in departments, I always try to look at the overall amount that's being allocated, and we try to be as fair as possible to figuring that allocation out. And yes, GPW, it costs a lot of money to run and to own equipment. Everybody knows that, right? But it is the town's infrastructure, so you have to make these investments. It's just, when do you make the investment versus what cash do you have available? So, um, I think when we go through and we hit this punch list, I mean, I don't know where, we talked about narrowing down the scope of of the warrant, but this thing's about a hundred pages long, and I don't know why, but it is, so we're gonna have to do our best to whip through this thing. And I know some of it is house cleaning, but in a, in a time of COVID, here we are, and I got, God knows how many pages to figure out.
I agree.
So we'll be doing some whittling.
Well, you know what I'm, what I'm telling you, so it is what it is.
And then the last, and then the other article, Dan, is you got there, um, we talked about it. If if, you know, whatever the decisions are made uh either by the board or town meeting, um, there's one there to rehab.
So maybe the rehab and the sweeper this year? Sweeper and rehab this year, trying.
I, I, I don't know what. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna vet, we're gonna vet out. I just wanted to get your input while I had you in here. Um, you know, you got a vacation coming up, and I don't wanna be conflicting with that, so, um, I didn't wanna take you off your vacation time, so. You know, I think it's gonna be the week that we're doing this, so I just wanted to plug this off and and eliminate you.
Very good.
So you can be, so you can be in peace. And not have to come see. Yeah, not have to come see us. So thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Silver.
Thank you.
Great work. Thank you. Um, like I said, we got the town clerk for a discussion, town council. Um, Miss Hebert, you wanna?
Um, sure. So town coun, town council's budget, I think we need to talk about, and I know it's on the agenda a little later for a reserve fund transfer. Um, we've had a lot of extra spending on this um account this year um due to some litigation that we're currently in the middle of. Um, so right now, we need a reserve fund transfer to cover um our most recent bill from KP Law. Um, I believe it's, let me just get to it, it's thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars that we need. Um, and that's just to get us up to date, so, um, I think it's worth talking about whether we want to increase this budget for um fiscal year twenty-two, or if we wanna look at doing an article um to add some additional funding to cover those costs.
Gentlemen, you've seen the letter from town council at a previous meeting. They're, they are going up on their fees. I don't know what that.
Yeah.
Ten dollars an hour, I believe, I know.
Yeah, what does that mean? You know, you know, times a thousand hours, that's ten thousand bucks, right? So right now, we got eighty-four thousand, five hundred bucks. And I wrote down here, we may need an article for litigation, and um what's really blown this budget out is PJ Keating. There's no secret there. I think everybody knows it.
Question. When was the last time we went out for an RFP for town council?
Well, before I was here.
I know we, we had done it a couple times. My, my feeling would be put out an RFP, see what comes forward.
I think that's brilliant, and the reason why I say that, Selectman Oona, is I was looking at some old paperwork from the town, and it appears that the town's been using KP Law since nineteen ninety.
Yeah, yeah. They're a good firm, but every once in a while, you just gotta.
And I agree, they are a good firm, but I think, you know, as I've said before, with with certain individuals and certain things, um, people and things become complacent. Um, and you might not always get the best bang for your buck after so long of of doing business with somebody, so it is good practice, so. Um, for the purpose of of the budget, um, we don't know what that little increase would mean. I mean, it's eighty-four thousand, five hundred bucks. Do you know what, in the previous year, what we expended from town council?
Yeah.
Is it, do they juices for the whole eighty-seven thousand bucks? Cause we used to be at sixty thousand bucks, not two hundred.
Last year, well, for FY twenty, we spent sixty-four thousand. In FY nineteen, it was ninety-eight thousand. I thought it was a year where there were a lot of union negotiations going on, I believe. Um, the year before that, it was sixty-five thousand, so, I mean.
So they're not on retainer, right?
They, they are.
Is there a base retainer and then?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a base retainer of four thousand a month. But then anything like, uh, like a PJ Keating would be above and beyond, and that would be charged at their hourly rate.
So I guess you just gave me a pretty idea, good idea of what they spent in contract negotiations over at PD, huh?
I can use.
Holy moly.
I think you go with the average of what we've been spending as a base.
I think what I, as far as the budget goes, I think that, and and I spoke with Miss Hebert, too, that I, um, I asked what we've been doing with a reserve fund. The reserve fund itself is what, one fifty?
Yes.
And we've only done, the departments only asked for what, twenty?
Yeah, we're down to a hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
So twenty thousand bucks.
Twenty when you're in.
So there's, there's, there's sufficient funds there. We're gonna, we have a um reserve fund transfer, whatever the amount was. I'll get to that when we get to it.
I'm hoping that, as we've talked PJ Keating, right, is that one, I think we need to explore possibility of outside, a different council supplement that what's been done before. I think we've discussed that, but then also, I'm hoping that we'd have a fee schedule with PJ Keating that recognizes this type of expense, and then, and we should have a fee schedule that, you know.
Represents.
Represents it. I mean, we're, we're, we're charged about fifteen grand a year. I mean, it's pennies, pennies, and we know that.
Not even willing to pay.
There's gonna be some degree of litigation with these guys, and so I think our, our fee schedule is way, way under uh under what it should be, and um I would hope that we should, we can look at that and get that moving as well.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree with that.
So you guys, you guys good with, cause we, we, we didn't talk about, we wanna make a motion to approve the town council's budget. So, you guys, you guys good with, cause we, we, we didn't talk about, we wanna make a motion to approve the town council's budget as presented?
That was eighty-four, five, I don't have it.
Eighty-four, five, I'm.
Yeah, eighty-four, five hundred.
Yeah, okay, so moved, yeah.
You fine with that, Ms. Lona?
Yeah, I am, but concurrently, we should consider a, um, RFP.
I can prop that.
Can we, we need to do that, um, ASAP. Because a town bylaws say, um, that we should vote that every year.
Alright.
So if the bylaws say that we're supposed to be doing that, appoint, it says, the board of selectmen shall appoint town council every year.
I mean, I'm all for, you know, I understand that there's additional costs, but by the same token, with Zoom technology, we're not requiring our council to come down here in person, right? And those are savings that, you know, people are, are experiencing.
I had a doctor's appointment and I did a Zoom meeting. And the, and the appointment was the same exact amount as my office visit. I'm like, I'm an happy guy, you spent five minutes with me, literally, I wasn't even in your facility. But it's, it's kinda crazy, but we should.
You know, we're not paying for travel back and forth.
I know, I hear you, I hear you, so we should, um, Julie, we should put that out, just to, just to see what's up, right?
I'll be working on that PM.
Yeah, we have an old one from the last time we went out for, with the RFP, so we can kinda.
How old is that?
Eight years.
Nineteen ninety?
Two thousand twelve, two thousand.
Yeah, I, I forget, but I mean, it's a thing that we can look at, so they, you know, mimic.
I'm sure, I'm sure it's pretty self-explo, you can find our template out there, Julie.
Yep.
Um, through the managers.
Yep.
Um, network that you, you guys have of, I mean, you can find anything you want on the internet, so. Town council's been done, town clerk, whatever's happening there, in discussion and approval. So gentlemen, we just, we discussed quickly pensions, insurance, Old Colony. We put it back on because Ms. Hebert would like us to vote, um, pensions, insurance in Old Colony. Is there a motion to approve the budgets that were presented to us? So moved?
Well, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So that, Ms. Hebert takes care of pensions, insurance of Old Colony? Old Colony was revised down a little bit, right?
It was, yeah.
Just a little bit, from its original.
That's pending their Esser funds offset.
I spoke with, um, the superintendent of Old Colony, Aaron Polanski, um, and he, he's alluded to me that it looks like that budgeted presentation that he made to us was probably gonna be the final. He said he is still looking into whatever that weird news, nizzy, whatever that.
Esser?
Esser grant?
Yeah.
He said something about that as well, he said, so we're trying to do something with that. But I wouldn't imagine that's gonna have that much of an impact for the amount of that Esser grant. Um, yes, it offsets costs somewhat, but nothing, nothing that dramatic. Okay, so, that's done. Gentlemen, as much as it, um, we, we talked about the golf budget, um, they talked to us about somewhere, um, back in the day with Mr. Cabral and Mr. Noble, they were discussing golf wager class. I was never a noble, Mr. Osterroch was ever really brought up to date, um, formally on that process. Um, there is some information in here, but it would require us to sit down and, um, go through the wager class and score ourselves and try to depict, and yes, I, I looked at the, the bagger or the golf bagger guy, and yeah, I could disagree on a couple of, of the ratings, but for the Mickey Mouse amount that it is, um, you know, it's half, you have, you have any questions?
Yeah, I had that.
Yeah, hold on a second.
I got it somewhere.
So.
It's the, uh, wager class, uh.
Yeah, it's in year thirty-one.
I don't know, I didn't get a chance to go home before the meeting, so.
So. I think there was some questions around salaries for the assistant superintendent, but we've been informed that he's made his certifications and licenses on the herbicides and pesticides and things of the alike. And then you had.
Right, there was like a ten thousand dollar increase for the minimum wage.
Yep.
Increase.
So the information that they provided is basically going through that wager classification plan. And they all scored out what, um, each of these categories should be for each of these positions. And the last four are the ones that they just finished, which are the, the superintendents and their assistants essentially. Um, and so, yeah, I, I don't think you guys have had a chance to look through it, but if you wanted to look through it. Everything else that was on here, the board at one point voted to approve. Those last four have to be approved, um, in order for it to be.
For the mechanic, assistant?
Yeah, mechanic, assistant, director, and of course superintendent.
Some members of the board may have voted to approve.
The, the board, in, in its majority at the time, voted to approve the other ones, yes.
Just saying.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at the manual behind it, that kinda lays out.
Yeah, I seen it, Julie, but for me to go through that practice and then have to call, um, Mr. Flynn, which is the chairman, and get through all that yakyako over the weekend and being east of weekend.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, you know, I don't know, it's the board's pleasure.
We can review it and vote it at another meeting if you'd like.
I mean, what were the salary increases, uh?
With the Ponzi scheme one, for the regular department heads?
No, for the, for the, um, can I just see a budget book or something?
Sure.
To review my, uh.
Um, so the, the assistant superintendent went up ten percent. The head professional was five.
And the others.
Yeah, we didn't set, I have to look at that, we didn't set up.
And these increases were based upon this?
Yes.
Which the golf committee made out.
Yes.
But then, this increase by a percentage, I don't know if it's contractual.
Which one was that?
The golf professional?
Yeah, the director of golf, the superintendent, that should not have anything in it because that wasn't, um, those two. That wasn't, that, we've decided and Ms. Hebert's gonna, for department heads, what we're, what we're doing and, you know. That, that time's coming and gone, it should have been done as far as department heads go.
Mm-hmm.
So, we got one more swipe and after that'll be zero. You ain't ready for town meeting, it's zero. And the board, the board can, we can do department head contracts the next meeting when we do articles and we can say that this is what it is and, you know, basically you're an employee at will. So if you don't like the one and out percent that the board's willing to do, um, for one year, you don't wanna sign your contract. Stay lovely, it's the way it works. So, that needs, that discussion needs to be had.
Yeah.
We've been talking about it for quite some time. Selectmen owners actually brought it up and kinda made that, that sales pitch and said, look, this is the way it should be done. And, you know, whatever amount of weeks have gone by and I'm still sitting here pondering and we're still sitting here pondering what the hell is going on. So, as far as that goes, so, um, I think by the next meeting, if that's, that position hasn't been taken, we vote.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what we have the town accountant plug into the budget and it is what it is at that point, either that, you can just, board can either say.
Has the discussion in Manhattan has, has been presented?
Um, I've talked to a few department heads, yeah. I haven't gotten a chance to talk to everyone, but I've talked to a good portion.
So.
Well, I think that should be, you know, discussed and I, I believe, we're all on the same page.
We were.
I'm with that, I'm with that number for this year, one year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, we've kinda thought about, or at least, you know, it's been brought up to me and I've thought about it for a couple months now and I've been able to decipher it in, in one year. I think, um, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, well, there you go, we'll do it next week. We gotta get these articles done for the FinCon too. Julie, we should be done with our budgets though, right? I mean, I know you had something about planning board and assessors that we haven't done, and town clerk, but. When I went initially through it, I wrote not ours, not ours, not ours, not ours. And then I've got checkbox near everything else that's ours. So are we done as far as the board of selectmen are concerned, as far as the board of selectmen's budgets that we control? I believe that we are.
Um, I don't have, I mean, I'm not sure what you guys typically do. Um, I have the school, the Christian School Department still not voted. I, I, again, I'm not sure if this is something you typically do, is put a vote on what you want for that, for this budget.
We don't vote unless my board, the board says something different, but on the normal.
Well, it's not our jurisdiction.
That's why, that's why I go, right, right when I started this, I go to right here, it says not ours, not ours, not ours.
So, yeah, that would be the end of yours.
You know, I understand the town clerk's looking to add, I don't know if it's a, a whole full-time position or extra hours for a position.
Yeah, it's extra hours to make that part-time person full-time, which impacts, I mean, just adding benefits.
No, I understand it as a deficit, but I think, I, I think to be honest, I mean, you know, as far as we, the board of selectmen are concerned, um, you know, we've done our job in doing everything we can. If the, if we're looking for cuts or whatever we need to, and we need to look at budgets, I think we're all familiar with where our increases came from, so it'll be pretty easy, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, um, for us to do that, and I think as far as FinCon goes, things like planning board, board of health, all the ones I got labeled that aren't ours, like selectman owner just says, not in our jurisdiction. Board of registrars, board of health, assessors, school department, as much as I'd like to have that conversation, um, you know, it's, that's the finance committee's job, I mean, there's, there's nobody, nothing else in here. My, my planning board, not ours.
Not that would be a.
I don't need, I don't, I mean, I know that they're looking for, I think it's a full-time planner, I've seen a job description go out for the planning board and so be it. Um, town clerk's not ours, town meeting and elections, crap like that, I don't. I think that's FinCon's job, to be honest, which at that point, they're gonna look at the budgets and listen to the department head and say, you know, just like, they're gonna look at our budgets and say, hey, and, you know, what are we, what are we, what's the discussion that's been had with, you know, we should be wrapped up with all of our budgets now, Ms. Hebert.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we'll have to go through that and make sure, but, um, you know, the FinCon, what, what are we saying, you know, what's allowable to use for balancing the budget? I mean, last year, we used three thirty-five and we were asking people to make cuts, like Dan's budgets, some of his budgets, I mean, and police did it on one of their vehicles. And, and then we're bringing those budgets back to what we'll call normal, um, from the previous year, so, I mean, you know, what's the allowable amount of free cash that we wanna be using? I mean, you know, you got, this year's a really whacked out year, so people, I can tell by how many frigging articles there are, it's like, hey, look at this, man, um, you know, ice cream cones and so, and lollipops. But we have an exorbitant amount of free cash because what we anticipated, we didn't even, never made in stride for the five percent cut from state aid. It was supposed to be four hundred and ten thousand bucks. We, we only got to like, I don't even know, like eighty thousand bucks, and that came from police and pretty much DPW, right? Um, that's where all the cuts came from. So we still balanced the budget last year with three hundred and thirty-five, I think, um, selectman lonat, um, he's been on the board for some years, um, and back on the board now, so he understands how this goes. I, I mean, we, we know what's available, what we should be doing to balance a budget every year. And I spoke on it numerous times, I, I spoke, I gave that speech to the school committee and FinCon at the last year's meeting. Um, prop two and a half levy increase, roughly four hundred and fifty thousand bucks, and then whatever we get in new growth. And I know that Mr. Howcroft from the finance committee's been a stickler on, you know, the assessors only giving up two hundred thousand bucks for new growth when we all know that new growth has been a lot higher than that. So, it, what, you know, I, I talked to you, Ms. Hebert, and saying maybe you ought to have that dialogue with the assessors office and, and maybe FinCon, um, Mr. Howcroft, he's, he, he knows the numbers pretty well and he understands the finance of the town. He's been doing this for a long time and he, he, we're in agreement where if you look at it, you say, hey, the last three years, new growth's been, you know, three hundred and, and the average of the three years has been three hundred, then you should be getting closer to the year average of your trailing three years of new growth, right? You never wanna use just that one particular year of new growth like this, for instance, this year. We've seen a huge spike in new growth, but a lot of that was caused by the reappraisals of the commercial properties, right?
Personal property.
Right, so, I mean, that, that number's out there, so, I mean, it's, 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 you know, it's not gonna be every given year and that's why you use that, that backward average. We've done it in the past, we, we've done it with water, um, when you look at the rates and things of the like, and that's what you should be doing, using the three or five year average and saying this or this. So, you know, you might get fifty extra grand, so if it's two fifty and you get four fifty, you get seven hundred thousand bucks by the DOR standards if you're really doing your math and your accounting properly and your budgeting properly, you get seven hundred grand a year to balance your budget. That, that's everybody. That includes all your fixed costs and everything else. Well, last year, we used three thirty-five to balance the budget, so we're up around, say, a million bucks. Balancing a budget every year on a million bucks is, you know, I, I've been around for a while and been on the FinCon for five years and on the board for a while and I, I'm smart enough man to understand that knowing everything that I know and knowing these budgets, the way we know these budgets with all our fixed costs and the things of the like, we'll never balance our budgets just on prop two and a half in new growth. I think it's virtually impossible. I, I would love to see it happen, but we proved last year, even with COVID, when we were technically shut down for almost a whole year, um, buildings closed and things of the like, we made those cuts and we didn't even come close, we still use three thirty-five. So, it, you know, I, I'm smart enough to understand that there is a percentage of your free cash that you'll always use every year. It's not prudent to be a bunch of drunken sailors hitting the punchbowl and saying, it doesn't matter if we use a million dollars out of free cash to balance your budget. That's past, we were, we were using a lot of money and we strive to use less and less of it so we can have money for capital purchases. So, you know, that's what you have to say, it is.
So, next week, we're gonna do articles, correct?
We need to get them done, yeah.
Yeah, I would just ask, when we do the articles, we get a representative for the finance committee here, um, I would ask that we have Melissa and Julie start the presentation off again with the one we did when we kicked off the budget session and then show where we are right now, you know, with stuff that's been approved, proposals, so on and so forth, so we can have a full picture of exactly where we wanna go with, with this budget. Because although there may be operational things, you know, here we're talking about loaders and sweepers and this and that, that is, that's part of what we're presenting to town meeting, right? So we may have to, uh, you know, today it looks great, wow, you know what, we need a loader, we need a sweeper. But after seeing the overall picture, I might say, whoa, whoa, hold on a second. So if we can have an all hands on deck.
Yeah.
For, for, you know.
We know what.
Kick the meeting off with where we, where we started with, where we think we are now, that'd be really helpful. Finance committee here.
Yeah.
Uh, the school committee, somebody's school department, school committee, the folks who have the big ticket items. You know, I don't think we need the library, you know, these.
Dan explained his position, I understand.
Big three, big four, right?
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need, um, everybody and their sisters and aunts and everything else.
No, but I understand when it's.
When you did this, when you.
If you're asking me to make a decision and to get like the overall view.
No, and I have, and I feel.
Julie?
Yeah.
When you did this too, see this sheet right there that you give us updates on?
Yeah.
So at first I went through this because when you, when we did the original deficit of the one fifty number we'll call, right? Okay, um, when, when, when we gave that number, I thought you said that would level funded budgets from the previous year. But that's not true.
Without school, without scholars.
But that's not true, because if, if.
Well, that's with asking everyone to do their best.
Certain people changed their budget, because you got a notation in here that said to Jim Merrick, building department, no change in the amount, broke out the item due to subscriptions, which was under my recommendation to have a separate lineup for online perimeter software. And, and it says, nothing's there for the deficit, but the budget increased by twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah, so in that, in that PDF that Dave was just talking about that I gave you, I, I said, everyone, the instruction was to try your best to level fund, but remember I had that whole, there was like a few pages that showed, these are the ones that did have significant increases and then these were the ones that were increases for fixed class, so.
Yeah, I don't understand.
There were those, there were those built in there.
So that's, that's where I was looking at this.
But this was the change from that point.
Right, I figured it out at, when I was at home last night looking at this, and I even wrote, not true on the nineteen thousand dollars for the treasurer, collector's position because that wasn't in the prior year's budget. It was loaded in this year's budget.
Right.
From the get-go in my budget book, but the previous year's, um, town treasurer, collector's position, that wasn't inside the budget. It's an increase to the budget of nineteen thousand bucks, that's a difference in that lineup, you follow me? So that, I'm looking at, there's more increases in the deficit, but it's not, because it wasn't level funded from last year. It was already blown into the budget from the start of this process.
So, so that is. So, so that is the changes from the, from when I gave you that PDF, that presentation on where we were with the one forty-three?
Yeah, 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 this, the budget book.
Yeah, those are all the changes that remained since that point, and, and in that PDF, I did give you all the, those significant changes on there.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying it would look like when you did this, the little update like we suggested, you keep giving us this.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking level funded from the previous year.
Yeah.
But the budget's, but, but, when I went back, I looked at it and I was like, oh, wait a minute, that budget's not level funded from the previous year, I just, you know, I skipped through that, like the police department's forty-three thousand dollar difference, so I'm like, hey, we got a seventy-five thousand dollar deficit additional, but um, I understand what you did, it's because the budgets were already, we'll call it front-end loaded, right? They already loaded those positions in, assuming.
All the, all the information's here.
Yeah.
You've done a great job of cataloging it, I think it's, again, it's just all in the presentation.
Yeah.
Put a nice bow around it, people at home will know what we're up to, you know, for guys like me, I need to hear it two, three times for it to sink in.
No, I can get, that, that was what I was gonna suggest as well, to get you just a, a clear update of where we are right now. Um, I will say I did talk to Kelly about the new growth, she's checking it because she also doesn't, she has current figures on what has actually come in, so she wants to make sure that before she gives me that number, that she actually has backup to prove it. Um, but I did talk to her about that, and, um, yeah, I, I'll get everything up to you guys, I'll get it, well, before the meeting, it's all together.
And, and she, she's got excess in, in overlay surplus too, that they carry.
We have not touched any overlay surplus for this budget, so you have to do that.
No, I understand that, but I'm, I, 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 I think that's important because we know, John, John Howcroft, eh, eh, like ad hocks, right, we know where the money is.
Yep.
And we're gonna discuss it, because if, if you're looking at the budget, so the balancing of the budget is the most critical component, forget about articles in the extra cash, you might have an overlay surplus. It's what we are doing as a municipality and how we're getting there.
Yep.
It's very dangerous to continue to use exorbitant amounts of free cash to balance a budget for budgetary reasons, right? We talk about that all the time. Um, and, and the DOR also, after talking to their attorneys, because I'm on the phone with them a lot over the years, um, they said it's always a good idea, I think it was like the reason I brought that up, I think it was one of your goals and objectives,
Yeah.
was to keep a balance of roughly eight hundred thousand dollars every year in free cash for capital, right, expenditures. That's kind of the rule of thumb, right? You said, yeah, the DOR likes to see that.
Yeah, certified, certified free cash of between eight and one point two, I think, is what we asked for.
Somewhere around there, yep, 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 so.
Yep.
You know, we, we've done well, um, I just don't wanna see it just because, you know, people get visions of sugarplums because they think that there's one point seven in free cash, it's an arbitrary number this year, and maybe another arbitrary number next year. So good for us, it will be.
Well, yeah, because this year we planned for a cut in state aid that we did not get. So that's four hundred and ten thousand already off the bat that we're gonna get added to our free cash for next year.
That was from last year, we don't know what we're doing this year.
In this current year, in FY twenty-one, we had budgeted for a, a five percent cut and we, and we're getting that money.
Right, but we used three thirty-five of that to balance the budget, right?
Last year, yeah.
Yeah.
We used three thirty-five of our free cash from the year before.
Correct, correct, so all that's really doing is taking the place of what you do, what you use free cash for.
But it will raise your number for next year by that.
Quite, it's arbitrary, and that's why, it's, hey, it's great, we took a conservative approach, and we will have extra money to be making purchase, capital purchases and things of the like, but don't let that number fool us.
Right.
Right, the thinking it's gonna.
Saying, whoa, you got all this free cash and you only need to, as Miss Heavitt and I have been in that dialogue, and we've been in that dialogue right with that goal of eight hundred thousand or a million bucks in free cash every year, oh, let's do this, and then come year three from now, you don't have that million bucks anymore, you're down to like three, four hundred thousand bucks because you went willy-nilly in the next, you know what I mean? Because you have that exorbitant amount, so.
Yeah.
Um, free cash is one-time expenditures, but we all realize that there's gonna be some amount of money, so hopefully we'll have that all broken down. I'll do my best to work with Miss Heavitt over the next couple of days to make sure we have a nice, clear, in-town account. Um, Melissa, make sure we have a nice, clear picture of what Mr. Loanat described, um, because that's what we've done in the past, so. So, you know, if we're just, we're just pass to whatever you guys wanna do in the golf wager class, we were talking about that, we never made the same.
We'll discuss it in, um.
We wanna discuss that at the next meeting, we can, but I, so, all right, pass it on to the next meeting. So if anybody wants to go talk to the Golf Committee members and have them fill us in on how they went through the process, fine. Review of fee schedules for potential increases, poll hearings, building fees, solar permit fees. So I asked Julie to talk to Jim Merritt, we've done it over the past, um, you know, years, and Jim said we usually do it every couple, three years. Um, and he said, he wrote an email, it says, I don't see any reason for us to, to need to do it, and the only reason why that came up is because his budget went up twelve thousand dollars for that permitting software, and, uh, I thought it might be a good idea, I had the fees, um, on, on your recap sheet, Miss Heavitt gives you licenses and permits and, and he tells you how much money you've captured, and we did a breakout of every department, um, that's on it. And Jim, the Building Department does a pretty good job with the wiring inspector, the plumbing inspector, and things of the like, we still have like a nineteen thousand dollar surplus from all the permits and fees and things of the like, but I, I asked the question, um, for us to have the discussion is just simply put, is he added twelve thousand bucks this year to that, that, um.
For the licensing?
Yeah, that licensing, we created a line item for the online licensing stuff that's costing, you know, us and taxpayers. Um, but he's still capturing his full budget, um, even with that twelve thousand dollar increase, so. You know, I, I would agree with Jim Merritt that everything looks, you know, we're not falling behind, in other words, in capturing those fees. Thank you. So it looks, it looks pretty, um, it looks pretty good, I just, you know, I wanted to make sure that we were on par with capturing this, the fees and things of the like, I think it might be a good idea, Julie, anybody who does capture permitting fees and, and things of the like, maybe they go through it and come, do some comps with surrounding communities. Um, you know, that permitting fees is really associated with anyone that surrounds us, like, you know, Rochester, Freetown, Faven, Dartmouth.
Right.
Um, towns, not cities, um, and see where their permitting fees are and their schedules, fees are, I started doing my own little research thing on it, and it gets pretty cumbersome, so. I think of each department, for everybody that does it, give us a little study on what, what we're doing and how we're getting there, and, um, you know, conservation, um, some pretty interesting stuff in the Wetlands Protection Act, how they should be capturing their salaries through fees and things of the like, so. I'd like to, I'd like to see all of that, Jim's done a good job with his, he's always done a presentation to the board, and it's always looked pretty good, so. You know, I'm not inclined to try to bang somebody an extra five bucks for a shed permit. That's, that's the only reason why we had it on here, gentlemen, is I wanted to make sure we were capturing as much as we could as far as fees go, because it's not taxation, it should be paid by fees. Vacation carryover for fiscal year end, twenty-one fire union, so the fire department, fiery MS, now that we've merged them, Chief Gallagher, myself, and Mr. Noble, we merged the departments, you know, brought it into one, under one umbrella, the fiery MS budget and things of the like. They don't have, um, carryover language in their contracts, like, um, I think s- most of our unions.
Every other one, I think, except police.
And police though, yeah, well, that's the nature of the business, but, and that's why I don't think we ever did it with firing EMS, but um, because of manpower from the fire department, we had a shortage of a full-time staffer. Um, and I know it's early on in the year, and that's the first thing I said to Julie, I was like, hey, for Christ's sake, we're only in April, and you just let up April, May, and June to use up some vacation time, but it says forty-eight hours, and the reason being it's forty-eight hours because we moved to two twenty-four-hour shifts, and because of the way, it's like they work two twenty-four-hour shifts, and then they got like a four-day-off thing, and then they come back, so it's not always the same in the, in the week, but at the end of the year, it all works out to the same, that's why you see forty-eight and not a forty-hour work week. Um, I'm okay with a one-week carryover, which basically that's what, that's what it essentially comes down to for the fire union. Is there a motion to allow one week on the forty-eight-hour carryover for the fire EMS union?
No, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you let the chief know?
I will, thank you.
And, um, so is the reserve, request for a reserve fund transfer coming from the Board of Selectmen, I would have to imagine, for the Department's Town Council, and the amount requested is thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars to be transferred to in the budget line item, and we're out of cash, there's nothing remaining. Is there a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer on the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars for Town Council?
Some will, some will.
No, second someone?
I'm sorry, second, sorry, 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 thank you. I was just saying, I mean, look, we gotta, as we're going through these court proceedings, I think we present this legal bill to the judge, you know, as we're going through all that, and, and try to, try to recoup that in some shape or form, as, and, you know, if there is a judgment on our side, I mean, that's, this is, it's a little much.
Yep. The, um, American Rescue Plan Task Force, it talks a little bit about infrastructure, I think this is what you were hitting on Selectman Loanat with Congress, pow, pow, and it says invested economic recovery, new fund investments, water, sewer, broadband, infrastructure, early estimates show that Akushnet may receive a million forty-eight thousand dollars, may receive a million forty-eight thousand dollars, I, I, uh, you know, task force, extra committees, I think we got a lot of all this stuff already done, I think we have a Board of Selectmen, I think as far as that goes, if it's for water, sewer, that's what the things can be used for, is more, plow more money into paving roads and water infrastructure because it's badly needed. Um, and this is an allocation that clearly states that that's what it should be used for, as an infrastructure bailout. Um, if that's, if that's something that we do end up getting, I don't think we need a task force, I would say if we did create a task force, which I don't believe that we need to, for a million bucks, you'd be surprised how fast, if you spent forty percent on water, forty percent of water, sewer, forty percent on paving more roads and getting, investing back into the community, that's eight hundred thousand out of it, you got two hundred thousand left if you, if you wanted to, you know, nickel and dime the other two hundred thousand bucks, you know, amongst everybody, and, you know, give the schools an opportunity to, to do certain things, whatever the, the like, if not, go more into infrastructure, but, you know, maybe ten percent to go to public safety, if whatever the needs are with our public safety divisions, that's a hundred grand, there's a hundred grand left over for miscellaneous things, but it's very easy to spend a million bucks, I would not wanna turn this into, you know, let's buy, you know, ice cream for that department, lollipops for this department, I don't think that's necessary to do. I think that the Board of Selectmen, that's our job, um, and that should be a task of the Board of Selectmen to kind of dictate where this money's being spent, and it clearly says it should be used for infrastructure, and, you know, we just talked about the big water infrastructure problems that we have. So if that's what it needs to be, that's where I'd be inclined to do it, and task force, if, if, if the board were to do a task force, my recommendation would make a citizens' task force. Um, you know, people from our community, not, not people that work within the town, because a lot of the people, no disrespect to our employees, but they're not taxpayers of the Town of Akushnet, so. Um, you know, if you were gonna try to do something with a task force, I would ask that the board consider it being a citizens' task force, people from our community to give us input on where money should be spent and allocated, where they would like to see it, ultimately the Board of Selectmen's decision, but I think that this board can easily accomplish the task of spending a million dollars. Given every, all the information I gave you about the water infrastructure in that town, we could spend ten million dollars and we still wouldn't be fifty percent done with our whole water infrastructure, so. I agree.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
If I, if I can, I, I agree, I think that it should be something that we include citizens in because it is their money. Um, I will say, you know, MMA and a lot of the groups have been sharing a lot of info on this, but we don't have finalized info. A lot of what they're coming out with is basically saying, you know, you wanna convene all of your stakeholders, this is a lot of money, and the Selectmen do have the ultimate authority on what we're gonna spend it on, but, um, you know, convene all the stakeholders, build consensus, um, look at everything that you could spend it on, and that would be the, you know, the essence of this task force, is get as many ideas going and think about how you can make a short-term, one-time revenue into a long-term investment. So that's kind of the thought process between having a task force is getting that collaborative, you know, idea and, and not letting it be a closed-door thing, letting, you know, everyone have a, have an understanding and a say in what we're looking at doing with the money.
Sure. Yeah, we could, we could get citizens' input, um, I don't think you need to establish any kind of people to take up department head's time to sit around in a room and and beat this, beat this thing over the head with a, with a stick, but.
No, we couldn't do it, Mr. Chairman, just an idea, if you talk to Roger Cabral, right, town meeting's coming up, and Bob Francis did this in the past, but we could, you know, do a pre-town meeting, you know, half hour, just here, we got this money, if anybody has any suggestions type of thing, you know, like, or maybe use a sugge, something, take advantage of the town meeting beforehand as a way to solicit input, you know, we could do something that's not part of town meeting, it's just that type of deal, just a suggestion.
Yeah, we could do that, we could do, um, like we talked about for the master plan, which I've seen other, I, I have some really interesting, um, information from other municipalities in this lo- local area that, that have created master plans. Um, all, all we should be done would be community citizens' input, um, and they did it on online thing, and you just put a question in, what are the, what are the most important things? And you give them certain criterias, and what I like to do is go to a webpage, you give them five things to pick from, and whatever the majority comes out, that's what you go after. So you put infrastructure, paving roads, you know, whatever, um, when you keep using the ones I've been talking about, water, um, infrastructure replacement. I mean, we've talked and beat this over the head with a stick, Slocum Street, and I told you this, nineteen hundred feet, um, and I know, Mr. Loanat, you've been in previous years, you've been an activist to try to do whatever you could to rehabilitate sidewalks or whatever, and the things of the like, the funding's just not there. Then when I spoke on it a year or two ago, and Miss, uh, it was recently for some grant for three hundred thousand bucks, that got kicked to the wayside because we got caught up in the aesthetics of what kind of street lamps do we wanna put on, are we doing concrete, and that, that deadline, phew, gone and out of the way. And what we keep telling these folks is we know your sidewalks are decrepit, it's a liability, your road sucks, your infrastructure, your water pipe's a hundred years old, but guess what? We don't have the money to do it. I, I, I just think that's inexcusable, and I think if you look at this million bucks, that's, that's a perfect project right there, Slocum Street, we gotta do sidewalks, it's a hundred-year-old water infrastructure, and I hate to say this to anybody who thinks that they're not drinking the water that's coming from that pipe, but that's one of the major inlets coming into the Town of Akushnet, feet from New City and New Beffet, so all of these neighborhoods are being distributed the water mostly out of that pipe, right? There's, there's only certain five pumping stations, meaning they're coming to the Town of Akushnet, so it, it, it does affect everybody, and that is things that we need to do, and we can't keep telling people, oh, we don't have a half a million dollars, or, well, we tried doing your sidewalks, but then we found out we have to do water service to each house, and now it's a million dollars, we can't do it. I mean, that's basically what's been going on for decades, with, and, and I know that it has been going on for a long time with the Slocum Street thing. Um, and I really think it's a shame if, if we can't get something done with Slocum, it's a major artery, um, it's great in our downtown area. A lot of people use it to walk down Mean Street, they can go down Slocum Street by the river park and around, all the way up, we have sidewalks, so. Think it's easy enough for us to manage that on our own. Board of Selectmen scheduled change discussion, Selectman Loanat, um, has requested, due to his, um, baseball season with his family, change back to Monday nights, four P M., is that correct?
Yes, it is, thank you, gentlemen.
For us to have consideration on moving, I mean, I know we've gone a blowout thing all the way to the end of the year, I don't think baseball goes to December, so I kind of drew a line through the end of September, maybe October, whatever the case may be, we'll discuss it as the time goes on, and if we feel that we're good with the Monday night meetings, maybe we'll just hold steady on that at the time.
Do you have an, an idea when the season runs still, Dave?
Uh, I think the end of August-ish.
End of August-ish?
I drew a line through the end of September, just to be careful, because, you know, I, I've been through that arena. Um, and, you know, the older guys, they, they ended up getting into playoffs and, you know.
Right.
They got these little World Series things, they try to make it, our park in our town does a very good job, and I know it's verging on our favor, but we've done a very good job of investing, um, a lot of capital in upgrading those fields over there, and they've done a great job, the park, um, commissioners have done a great job with those little kids out there to try to make it feel like a, you know, major league experience to, to the little dudes, right? And keeping it up, so they, I'm sure Dave knows that they carry out these little tournaments and things of that nature, so whatever it needs to be, um, when he's done, we'll have the discussion, if things go accordingly.
Yeah.
If the board wants to keep it Monday nights, let it ride.
Yeah, I'd, I'd cut out during that time and, and, exactly.
Very, thank you, gentlemen.
Rediscussion and, uh.
So we're good?
Good, yeah.
Our next meeting will not be Monday, April nineteenth, will it? Julie?
Next meeting is next week, so if it's one.
Well, we didn't say, we, I said that just because I'm, I'm concerned about the deadline for posting the warrant, and we need to get this done, so if this board doesn't mind.
Do it next week.
Yeah.
I'd like to get, just out of respect to the FinCon, I mean, they, they got their hands full, and, and you know what? They might have to have back-to-back meetings in the upcoming weeks, and I, I don't, we got a late start, um, no fault of ours, we just got a late start, and, and I'll leave it at that, so. so you know what, let's, let's try to get everything done that we need to get done so we could just let the FinCon vet the process.
So, yeah, we have to have the warrant printed and ready by the twenty-third, which is, you know, essentially if we're meeting only on Mondays, that's two more Mondays.
All right, we're going to bang it all out next Monday. You guys can be Monday, four o'clock, Monday.
Monday?
Monday or Tuesday's fine, because the season doesn't start till May, so you want to.
Oh, you want to do Tuesday? Let's do Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday, because we always get.
So we're going to do, a week from today, it's the thirteenth.
So we'll start the Mondays in May then, is that what you said, May?
Okay. It's Tuesday the thirteenth. It's Tuesday, okay.
Okay.
I apologize, I'm. I'm just texting Ms. Labonte, she said she was confused about coming, she said she has no problem coming in front of the Board of Selectmen to discuss her budgets, but she normally does that with FinCon as a, as we talked about, so no big deal. She is an elected official. Ms. Labonte's done a great job as town clerk, I think everybody knows that, so she can go to FinCon and discuss whatever she needs to discuss with that. So next Tuesday, four P M. And we will be moving thereafter to Monday, so we'll figure it all out from the end with Ms. Hebert.
Right.
So, I don't know, what day, we say that was the thirteenth or the twelfth?
Gentlemen, I'll throw this out there, I mean, I know, I may, may be counterproductive, but like when, if, if you guys need, you know, extra time to digest the information, don't want to burn the weekend, a Wednesday would be fine by me, right? There's games on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but I don't know if that, how that impacts, you know, meeting prep and all that, just, it's just games now are Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, they used to be Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Problem with Wednesdays, and that's not all the time, but the problem with Wednesdays, the FinCon meets on Wednesdays at, not that they're meeting in person right now, but when they do, it'll conflict with them, so, hey, you know what, I do like that extra day because I get, you know, you can burn the midnight hour on the weekends and you still have Monday to, to do what we have to do, but I've also done it for several years with you on Monday nights and again, there's an election coming up and I have an opponent, so I might not be around.
All right. All right, well, thank you, gentlemen.
No problem. So the thirteenth, it is Julie.
All right.
Is there a motion to, Julie, anything on the town administrative report, I'm sorry?
The only thing, it just came in right before a meeting, Chief Gallagher let me know